Buenas tardes, bienvenidos a la Cámara de la Cámara.
Estamos aquí para estar en la junta. Tenemos dos miembros presentes en este momento. Quiero decir, en el momento de su punto, pero estamos diez miembros por ahí. Llevándose la lista de los que van. Buenos días, todos. Bienvenidos otra vez al Consejo Municipal del Consejo de la Cámara para la hora viernes 19 de 10:00. El Consejo de la Cámara junta todos los martes en el Colosio Viernes a las 10 de la mañana. Les invitamos a participar aquí en las cintas del Consejo. También nos pueden ver en vivo en casa por su estación de cada año. Podemos verlo en el webcast o por la página de la Cámara o por el teléfono del Consejo. Tenemos ocho miembros presentes en este tiempo. Necesitamos diez para un coro. Pero este siendo el viernes, como es costumbre, tenemos un número de presentaciones especiales. Tenemos presentaciones especiales para los miembros del Consejo de Los Ángeles. La presidenta reconoce primero al miembro con...
Señor presidente y miembros del Consejo, estoy orgulloso. Tan orgulloso de nuevo hoy para recibir a un grupo de jóvenes campeones de mi distrito aquí a las alcaldías. Sé que mi amigo Tom Lavand es leyendo mis notas aquí. Mi personal pone usted en mis notas. Sé que mi amigo Tom Lavand es orgulloso de nuestra ciudad y su historia de fútbol rica. Pero sé desde experiencia personal que el valor de una buena equipo de apoyos. Señoras y señores, por favor ayúdenme a recibir al coed cheerleading squad de Banning High School, los campeones estatales. Bueno, estoy feliz de felicitar oficialmente y recibir aquí al Consejo de la Cámara, los campeones estatales. Los campeones del estado, el squad de cheerleading de Banning. Y como pueden ver en su pequeña rutina ahora, requiere de tremenda habilidad y disciplina y habilidad atlética para ser un top notch cheerleader. En realidad, me estaban diciendo que practican todos los días, incluso los sábados y domingos. Fueron contra muchas competiciones muy buenas para ganar este premio. Así que estamos muy, muy orgullosos de ustedes. Uno de los cheerleaders, aunque con tantas horas trabajando en la lista de cheerleaders, va a ser o será la valedictoria de su clase este año. Cuando graduase en junio y planeen ir a UCLA, esperamos verlos en el squad de UCLA.
El 10 de marzo de 2002, nuestro squad compitió en Universal Studios para el Club Spirit Internacional 2002 Cheerleading California State Championship. Trabajando una increíble rutina mostrando nuestra prominente habilidad atlética y resistencia, ganamos el título de Campeón Estatal de California. Y mantenemos ese título con una cantidad inmensa de orgullo y honra. Todo nuestro trabajo duro y dedicación finalmente se han gastado en la mejor manera posible. Nuestras duras horas de práctica y todo el sudor y lesiones han resultado en gran logro. Para ganar el título estatal, tuvimos que derrotar a muchos otros institutos, incluidos los campeones de la última temporada, y lo hicimos. En los diez años en los que Banning ha estado compitiendo en esa competición, esta es la primera vez que un equipo de Banning ha podido llevarlo hasta todo. Estoy muy orgullosa de nuestro equipo y este año siendo mi último, estoy emocionada de terminar mi año como cheerleader de Banning High School que está llevando el título estatal de California. Durante mi carrera de cheerleading, he aprendido mucho. El programa no solo me ha enseñado a ser un atleta excelente, sino también ha creado mi carácter general. Ha mejorado mi confianza y me ha enseñado la dedicación y lo difícil que puede y puede lograr. Sé que hay un enorme estereotipo en el mundo y el desprecio de los cheerleaders. Ustedes conocen la analogía, los cheerleaders go airhead. Bueno, eso es exactamente lo que es un estereotipo. Decir, estoy orgulloso de decir que la mitad de nuestro squad tiene al menos un GPA de 3.0, en contradicción con todos los estereotipos. Y como caso de hecho, este año soy la valedictoria de mi clase. Trabajo duro para lograr este premio y me da una especie de satisfacción para demostrar que sí, un cheerleader es valedictorio. Solo quiero decirle gracias a Mr. Mendoza, Miss Franco, Monica y Rudy, y especialmente a mis compañeros. Gracias por hacer que mis años en la escuela de bachillerato sean muy memorables. Hay un imprimido que no solo está en mi vida, sino en mi corazón. Y quiero que todos mis compañeros sepan que ustedes no solo son mis compañeros, pero también amigos, pero también una segunda familia para mí. Todos ustedes son como hermanos y hermanas. E incluso aunque el tiempo pasará y más probablemente nos separaremos inevitablemente, solo saben que tienen una diferencia en mi vida y me han dejado memorias inolvidables en todas mis experiencias. Así que chicos, sigan trabajando para que el próximo año pueda volver y ver a ustedes defender nuestro título estatal.
Gracias. Ahora quiero presentarles sus certificados. Y ustedes están equivocadas, los estereotipos de un cheerleader, quién sabe lo que serán. Yo era un cheerleader en la escuela de bachillerato. Y aquí hay una pequeña nota que el jefe de la Cámara de Los Ángeles fue, los llamamos líderes de la cancha, durante sus años de universidad. Eso es un buen hecho. Rudy Mendoza. Su asesor, oh, él es su asesor hoy. El asistente asesor, Mary Crane. Coed cheer coach Rudy Rodriguez. Coed cheer coach Monica Soto. Israel Aspet... ¿Cómo se dice eso? Congratulaciones, Chris Bradley. Nancy Cisneros. Hilton Chavez. Christopher Diaz. Samantha Diaz. Cynthia Domínguez. Victor Garcia. Crystal. Congratulaciones. Lizette Marquez. Angelina Martina. Juliana. Antonio. Maria Reynosa. Ralph Rivera. Travis Rodriguez. Melissa Salinas. Monique. Rosana. Y Quioko. Y tengo una placa importante de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles para el Benéus Banning High School, Campeón Estatal de Cheerleaders. Tenemos al principal aquí.
Quería decir algunas cosas. Esto es muy especial para los estudiantes de la Cámara cuando tienen esta clase de honor. Ellos pasan muchas horas trabajando y está bien cuando les dan reconocimiento. Por eso también es bueno cuando se juntan juntos sus actividades curriculares y la escuela. Como parte su de un todo muy orgullosos de ellos y esperamos más años de ser campeones del estado.
Déjenme decirles que esto es lo que está bien sobre Los Ángeles. Y Wilmington es lo que está bien sobre Los Ángeles. Y Banning High School es lo que está bien. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias. La presidenta reconoce al señor Reyes para una presentación. Señor Gracián, ¿podría estar conmigo? Miembros del Consejo de la Cámara. Muchas veces nos critican por ser parroquiales. Esta es una vez que tengo que ser. Como ven, hoy estamos celebrando el 40 aniversario de Dodger Stadium. Hablamos del estadio. Creo que es generalmente grande, pero hay pocas estructuras en esta ciudad. Puedo traer muchos recuerdos colectivos para todos nosotros. Hemos visto campeonatos. Hemos visto campeonatos mundiales. Y puedo decir que vamos a ver otro este año. Hemos visto Drysdale, Colback, Say, Garling, Loops y Russell. Hemos visto Fernando Mania y, claro, Gibson's homerun. Pero también puedo compartir con ustedes la oportunidad de ver a mis cuatro hijos la primera vez juntos al Estadio Dodgers. Y vimos un gran juego. También vimos los juegos de fuego. Y solo los recuerdos que puedes ver construir. Para nosotros fueron recuerdos y experiencias que tienen valor. Y este Estadio nos da la oportunidad. Y cada año es increíble pensar que un niño está teniendo esa clase de experiencia. Todos los años. Y en los 40 años desde que Dodgers han tenido un estadio de casa, más de 108 millones de fans han disfrutado de más de 3.100 juegos. Como vemos el juego, ha evolucionado en los últimos años. Hemos visto otras ciudades construir nuevos estadios. Pero la verdad es que están tratando de replicar lo que tenemos aquí, y eso es historia. Hoy puedo decirles que Dodger Stadium sigue siendo uno de los más bonitos en el país. Así que es mi gran placer presentarle el certificado a Bob Gracián y a Derek Hall que representan a los Dodgers. Y es una resolución que proclama la celebración del 40 aniversario de Dodger Stadium. Está firmado por todos. Quiero agradecer su apoyo y les presento a Bob Gracián y a Derek Hall.
Gracias, señor presidente, miembro Reyes. Como dijo el consejero Reyes, estamos celebrando el 40 aniversario de Dodger Stadium. Y cuando comenzó a remitirse a sus experiencias en Dodger Stadium, estaba haciendo lo mismo. Recuerdo cuando mi padre me llevó a Dodger Stadium en los principios de los 60s. Y los recuerdos de Dodger Stadium y lo que Dodger Stadium parecía en ese momento eran tan fuertes en mi mente. Pero una de las cosas que tengo que enfatizar es que Dodger Stadium no es genial solo porque el edificio. Dodger Stadium es genial debido a los increíbles fans que hemos tenido en la ciudad durante los últimos 44 años. Y los increíbles empleados que han trabajado en nuestro edificio a lo largo del tiempo. Tengo que decir honestamente que Dodger Stadium realmente ha experimentado algunos de los momentos más grandes de la historia de la ciudad de deportes. Pero la experiencia fue lo que fue debido a los grandes fans de deportes que tenemos. Continuamos atraer a tres millones de fans año tras año tras año. Nuestro estadio es el cuarto más viejo en el baseball major League ahora mismo, pero no se podía verlo mirándolo. Y la razón por la cual hemos sido capaces de mantenerlo de tal manera increíble es debido al apoyo de nuestros fans. Estamos orgullosos de Dodger Stadium, estamos orgullosos de la colaboración que tenemos con la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Estamos orgullosos de la colaboración que tenemos con nuestros fans y nuestros fans. Y estamos increíblemente honrados y humildes por este honor hoy. Así que muchas gracias.
No se vayan. Señor Reyes, algunos miembros del Consejo también deberían decir algo. Hay un comentario más que debemos hacer. Y que como miembros del Consejo, a cargo de el jefe Jim Hart, les gustaría proclamar hoy Dodger Day. Señor Weiss.
Agradezco que reconozca que el señor presidente antes, señor Lavand, porque voy a decir algunas palabras sobre los Dodgers. Pero no hay manera, no hay manera de seguir a Tom Lavand hablando de algo tan importante como los Dodgers o Dodger Stadium. Así que muchas gracias por indulger, señor presidente. Solo quiero decir que hoy es Dodger Day en Los Ángeles. He tenido la fortuna extraordinaria de poder decir que voy a llevar a mi familia a Dodger Stadium. Hoy voy a ver a los Dodgers contra los Padres de San Diego. Y no hay nada más frío que ver los ojos de niños jóvenes cuando los llevan a Dodger Stadium para juegos de Dodgers. Para mí, como aquel que creció aquí, creció y fue con mi mamá y papá a juegos de Dodgers. Las cunas de campo eran $4.50, los alojes eran $3.50, las reservas eran $2.50. Y el nivel rojo era $1.50. Creo que los bleachers eran como $1.50 o uno. Las cosas son un poco diferentes, pero fundamentalmente realmente no son. Veo el mismo estadio que vi cuando era niño. Mis hijos venían de ese estadio y mis hijos experimentan el mismo gozo. Los niños de Los Ángeles tienen por cuarenta años. Es un honor ser un representante electo en la ciudad, que incluye a ustedes y a la organización. Gracias a todos los Dodgers. Y ahora, Tom Lavand.
Gracias, señor presidente, señor Weiss, señor Reyes. Y tengo a Isaiah Landry aquí hoy, quien conocen Bob. Su madre fue su asistente ejecutivo durante muchos años, que es tan grandioso, está sentado en mi mesa. Es el hijo de nuestro gran soldado de armas, also Landry. Así que es bueno tenerlos aquí en sus bluades Dodgers. Pero cuando tenía su edad, estaba sellando el examen de la hermosa, en la avenida Hyperian. Y recuerdo las peligros, Dodgers firmaron un pago anual. Willie Crawford por $100.000. Fue un momento muy importante. Y esos tiempos se crean en Los Ángeles para jóvenes seguir los Dodgers, ver cómo jugarían los grandes equipos que tenían. Y el gran estadio. Sé que John Farrar siempre hablaba del gran estadio para el mundo, porque cada vez que tenía la oportunidad de visitar un lugar. Amaba nuestro Colosio de Los Ángeles, pero también amaba Dodger Stadium y los equipos que habían estado allí. Así que estoy orgulloso de unirme y hablar de todos los grandes momentos. Ver a Willie Davis y Manny Mona golpear en el parque, home runs en el mismo partido contra Montreal. Ver a Joe Ferguson en un partido de día, golpear dos bombas fuera de la raya derecha. Fui a la cárcel de Cal State en LA. Antes de ir a Cal State en LA, solía ir a Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. Me enfermaron porque Vince Cullywood dijo, bienvenidos a la partida de hoy en Dodger Stadium. Aquí en el hermoso parque de Legion, con el fondo de las hermosas montañas de San Gabriel. Y simplemente me hizo sentir como en casa. Así que volví a la escuela y terminé la escuela en California sur. Este es un gran lugar, una ciudad hecha de grandes instituciones. Este es el lugar aquí en Civic Center y otros centros civiles en todo Los Ángeles son lugares importantes. Nuestros museos, nuestros parques son lugares importantes, pero nuestros grandes estadios son lugares importantes. Y el Colosio, hogar de dos carreras olímpicas y el campeón mundial de la lucha en 1959, los Dodgers de Los Ángeles. Donde mi defensa usaba el coche de calle en Vermont. No tenía tan viejo como él. Usaba el coche de Vermont para ir a los juegos de Dodgers en el Colosio, pero ahora es Dodger Stadium. Y 40 años joven, lo cual es... Y 40 años joven, lo cual es muy especial. Y mucho sobre Los Angeles allí, lo cual muestra al mundo entero. Pero solo quería agradecerles todo lo que hacen y todas las cosas que hacen por los jóvenes, sus asociaciones y también los otros eventos allí. Vi los Beatles allí en 1966 y fue muy especial. Y también cuando el popei llegó a Los Angeles, había una gran masa allí. Y voy a cerrar diciendo que en Dodger Stadium, mi madre, Dios bendiga su alma, cuando ella era representante de la archdiós de Los Angeles, se acercó a saludar al pope. Al lado de ella estaba un joven de la comunidad filipina. Y el pope miró al hombre filipino y dijo, "Dios bendiga a los filipinos." Y mi madre escuchó eso y le dijo al pope, "¿Y qué tal los irlandeses?" Y dijo, "Dios bendiga a los irlandeses también." Así que Dios bendiga a los Dodgers por todo lo que hacen, por todo lo que han tenido allí, por los grandes juegos de baloncesto y por las muchas actividades y eventos deportivos que han tenido. Usted es una gran parte del Allee Park, de la comunidad, usted es muy fuerte. Es genial ver la cooperación que tienen con el concejal del primer distrito, Ed Reyes, que se preocupa mucho por su distrito y responde a esas necesidades. Muchas gracias. Traigo un punto muy importante, que es que espero trabajar con el resto del consejo para ver si podemos establecer ese oleoducto que revitalice Chinatown, conecte la Largo Station y tuviera ese autobús de juego divertido que subía al estadio y lo embacaba. Nosotros nos gustaría trabajar juntos. Como no tenía ningún mal intención, un vuelo de Super Angels de Chinatown con la parada en Chinatown y hasta Dodger Stadium. Un día, un gran fachado, así que todo el mundo podía pasar por la metro, por la Union Station, por la Avera Street, hasta allí. Todo esto va a pasar bajo la dirección de Ed Reyes y con el help de Tom y Derek. ¡Gracias, señor presidente y colegas! Voy a hablar de el pope en Dodger Stadium, hablar de cuando fui al Coliseum a ver a los Dodgers, soy nativo de Angelino. Pero una cosa que no se mencionó por nuestra gran historiadora, Tom Lavon, es la cooperación que la organización de los Dodgers ha hecho con el Departamento de Policía, donde han permitido su área de parking y su uso para fines comerciales durante un largo periodo de tiempo. Ir a muchos juegos de Dodgers y ir a los juegos de Dodgers este año cuando había un bloqueo de tráfico alrededor de toda la área donde tantos fans querían ir a ver a los Dodgers. Desafortunadamente, no terminó de esa manera, pero todavía fue un evento de celebración. Usted ha sido un buen vecino del Allee Park. Recuerdo cuando el estadio estaba construido, los concursos circulaban entre los pueblos. Pero a lo largo de los años, como usted ha sido un muy buen vecino para la comunidad, ha sido una oportunidad para la gente, el trabajo que usted crea, las oportunidades para el deporte, las oportunidades para ayudar a Los Angeles. Y yo voy a acompañar a mi colega, Ed Reyes, quien sé que es un planificador urbano y quiere revitalizar el área de downtown, Chinatown y las comunidades circulantes. Para apoyar lo que podemos hacer para ayudarle y su organización, porque usted es un buen vecino de la ciudad de Los Angeles. Y en las palabras de la maravillosa Tom Lavon, Dios los bendiga. Muchas gracias. El señor Garcetti aquí, creo que quiere decir algunas palabras. Janice Han querría que dijera esto. Por favor, den especial homenaje al gran abogado de Los Angeles, Tommy Lasorda, y a todos los Dodgers allí. Tommy estaría en Nueva York y todos los policías de Nueva York estarían lineando porque él entraría al estadio allí, al Stadium, y Tommy iría directo a esos grandes oficiales de policía de Nueva York y decía, "Es genial ver el mejor, el segundo mejor departamento de policía en el país." Porque ama LA. Dios los bendiga, Tommy Lasorda. Gracias. Gracias, señor Lavon. El señor reconoce a la siguiente persona, señor Lavon. Gracias, señor presidente y miembros. Es muy emocionante ver a los Dodgers aquí. No toman riesgos cuando juegan baloncesto. Van allí, juegan duro, cargan muy duro, los Dodgers lo hacen. Pero aquí en City Hall tenemos a alguien que tiene que cuidar de todos los riesgos que tomamos aquí en la comunidad, con los varios eventos de la comunidad, y alguien que ha sido tan especial para nosotros a lo largo de los años, alguien que nos ha ayudado, administrado nuestro gobierno, ha sido Richard Wells. Richard Wells está retirado después de tres décadas de gran servicio en la ciudad de Los Angeles. Era un miembro de la United States. Quiero decirlo correctamente aquí en la Navy. Era en la Navy de Estados Unidos. Sé que me corregí antes de eso de alguien que va a hablar en unos momentos. Pero él servió cuatro años y en un año, viajó a Vietnam. También trabajó en muchos de nuestros departamentos de la ciudad, incluidos el aeropuerto y el harbor. Se convirtió en el asistente de gestión de riesgos de la Puerto de Los Angeles, lo cual fue muy útil en manejar los asuntos que eran tan concernentes, todo ese suministro de bienes en Los Angeles y cómo funcionaba. También ha sido siempre útil en los oficios del consejo, el oficio del alcalde, otros departamentos en tratar de encontrar soluciones para lo que tienen y tener sus actividades para asegurarse de que la gente esté cuidando y los servicios de la ciudad estén cuidando. Pero él es realmente uno de los grandes empleados que ha ayudado a la gente, a otros. Por favor, invita y saluda a Richard Wells en su retirada aquí, ya que recibió sus comendaciones durante más de 30 años de servicio en la ciudad de Los Angeles. Gracias, Tom. Este honor realmente pertenece a muchas más personas que a mí. Tengo un estatus muy dedicado. Por supuesto, la implementación viene de muchas personas trabajadoras en toda la ciudad. Si hemos tenido éxito en el reto de gestión de riesgos y la conciencia de seguridad, ha sido el trabajo de muchas personas. Así que realmente aprecio este honor. Muchas gracias. Queremos tener al personal que se levante para la gestión de riesgos, darle un beso. Tienen que dar un gran aplauso a Richard. También, miembros del consejo, señor presidente, tenemos un invitado destacado aquí hoy. Es el mayor supervisor de las escuelas privadas en Corea. Está aquí hoy. Tenemos a un representante del oficio del alcalde aquí que va a saludarnos. Pero por favor, invita al Dr. Young Kim Cho, presidente de la Asociación de Escuelas Privadas en Corea. Viene de la cuarta mayor ciudad del mundo, Corea del Sur. No le alejando del gran centro de la ciudad de Hua-Sung, Corea. Y nos gustaría saludarle también. Y pregúntale al doctor. Me gustaría hablar con él. Doctor Ri. Doctor Ri. ¿Quién? Correcto, lo envié bien. Lo interprete mal. Doctor Kim.
Gracias. Por cierto, he estado en Estados Unidos durante más de 30 años. Solo he estado trabajando como profesor en Corea, en la ciudad de Kwanzao especialmente. Por cierto, me gustaría hacer una introducción. Un famoso anciano en Corea, Dr. Cho Young Kim. Dr. Cho Young Kim es el presidente de la Escuela Privada de Escuelas私学 Association en Corea. Ha dedicado su vida entera a la educación. Hace 52 años, ha establecido la escuela de bachillerato, escuela secundaria. Ahora, Tornam Techna College, tiene alrededor de 7,000 estudiantes. También la Universidad de Nam. Tiene control de los 6,400 estudiantes. Escuelas privadas y universidades en Corea. Entonces, es el presidente de la educación de Corea. También aquí está el doctor. El también es vicepresidente. El doctor también es presidente de la universidad. Entonces, él está aquí. Es un compromiso juntos para promover nuestra universidad. Entonces, me gusta presentar a la caballera aquí. El doctor Cho Young Kim. Es especial. Puede sacar cinco, seis, diez veces. Tiene brazos fuertes y cuerpo fuerte. Especialmente, la universidad Tornam Tecnicaletti. Tienen dos años, van a hacer cuatro años en la institución. Es una institución pequeña, 12 plazas. La universidad Tornam Tecnicaletti. El colegio está en la institución mañana. Entonces, él es maestro de eso. El doctor, es un profesor. Es especial. Usted sabe que Tornam tiene uno de los mejores juegos olímpicos en este momento. Así que espera enseñar cómo respirar, cómo ejercitar. No se puede entender. Yo creo que lo más especial es, antes del doctor, es que vamos tan internos en nuestra ciudad. Por favor, déle el micrófono al doctor Cho.
El doctor, el doctor, y todos ustedes. Gracias a ustedes, que han dado un lugar glorioso. Muchas gracias.
Presentar al consejo.
El consejo. El alcalde. También todos los miembros del consejo. Están muy en contra de hablar frente al consejo. El señor ha venido a Los Angeles ayer. Juste vino de Los Angeles, de Corea. El señor ha estado en Corea durante 56 años. He enseñado 56 años para el estudio de la universidad en Corea. Ahora, desde la escuela primaria hasta la universidad, así como la universidad. He enseñado toda mi vida, desde la escuela primaria hasta la universidad y también la universidad. En Corea, hay 6,400 escuelas de educación. Allí, el señor está haciendo la dirección de la asociación. Son 6,400 escuelas y universidades en Corea. Hoy, gracias a ustedes, que han dado un lugar glorioso. Muchas gracias.
Puedo traducir eso. Muchas gracias, Los Angeles. Gracias, señor presidente, gracias a miembros. Gracias, señor Lavon. La presidenta reconoce a la siguiente persona, la señora Perry para una presentación.
Gracias mucho, señor presidente y colegas del consejo. Tengo una persona muy especial aquí hoy. Y creo que ustedes lo conocen por su activismo, su compasión, su compromiso y su advocacy en nombre de aquellos que no tienen voz. Y estoy hablando de Ted Hayes. Estoy muy feliz de presentar a Ted con un certificado de reconocimiento hoy porque su compromiso es inabundante para la desaparición de la pobreza, no solo en Los Angeles, sino en un nivel nacional. Ha desarrollado una marcha de estudiantes, que ustedes escucharán en un segundo, para desarrollar un diálogo abierto sobre el tema de la desaparición de la pobreza y para unir al público para luchar para erradicar la desaparición de la pobreza. Es el fundador de Dome Village, una organización dedicada a mejorar la vida de los pocos proporcionando comida, refugio y otros servicios importantes. A través de su continua advocacy por los derechos de los pocos, Ted y la gente de Dome Village han hecho grandes esfuerzos en levantar la conciencia de la desaparición de la pobreza y diferentes formas de responder a este tema. A través de sus acciones, nos ha enseñado el poder de trabajar juntos, independientemente de la raza, la religión o la etnología. Encourago a todos ustedes y a todos en la ciudad a venir al Marcha de 1.000 Estudiantes Against Homelessness este domingo, el 21 de abril, y demostrad su solidaridad y deseo de tomar medidas y comenzar el proceso de sanación de nuestra comunidad. Y en nombre de la ciudad de Los Angeles, Ted, al Distrito de Número 9, te saludo y a tus colegas, Katie Haber, John Lee, Rhonda Flansbaum, Jeff Penager, Chester Ward, Alex O'Connor, Rudy Barajas, de East Los Angeles College y Joveness Inc., y digo muchas gracias por mantener este tema en la frente de todos nuestros corazones.
Buenas tardes, señor presidente, consejo, el consejo de la ciudad, por supuesto, Janet Perry. Primero el consejo. En 9:11, un joven llamado Omar Ritchie, del Islamic Center de Southern California, se acercó a mí, a mi padre Richard Slaughter, de Holman's Incorporated, y dijo que en honor de Ramadan, el cariño del tercer pilar de Islam, que le gustaría traer a sus estudiantes, 75 estudiantes, a trabajar con la desaparición de la pobreza, en el centro de la ciudad de LA, que ahora es la zona cero. Y de eso ha salido alguna forma, el Marcha de 1.000 Estudiantes Against Homelessness. Son estudiantes islámicos, cristianos, budistas, hindus, ateístas, todo tipo de gente. Escuelas de universidad, colegios, vengan juntos para ayudar a la ciudad y a este país. El pensamiento es que no importa nuestra filosofía política, nuestras religiones, nuestras creencias, nosotros como ciudad, una gente civilizada, supuestamente, una ciudad, no podemos seguir haciendo negocios en esta ciudad, en este país mientras la gente está poniéndose en nuestras calles. Es un desastre para la ciudad, este país y el mundo entero que tenemos que mirar a América y ver esta situación desastrosa. Y estamos llamando al presidente de Estados Unidos, la líder de este consejo, Janet Perry, al alcalde, Jim Han, al gobernador, grandes nombres que vinieron ayer a apoyar. Que nosotros tenemos que juntarnos con la nación. Y, usted sabe, Janice Han me dijo hace un día, todos los terrenos que están en la ciudad de Los Angeles ahora, pro y con. Tal vez si todos nos enfocamos en ayudar a nuestros seres humanos, lo cual es realmente en el interés de nosotros mismos, que podemos sanar esta ciudad y avanzar en el siglo 21. Así que este marcha no es solo sobre la pobreza en sí, sino sobre nosotros, como la comunidad civilizada en el mundo. Y debemos de darle a todo el mundo. Y tengo sentado aquí esta mañana, voy a encontrar que hacer unas palabras. Como representante, el día antes de los años, me gustaría dar el soporte en plan para tener gente. Me gustaría invitar a todos aquí, estar en abril 21. Van a marcar. Marcha de 1.000 Estudiantes Against Homelessness a las 12:00. Gracias. Comenzando aquí en City Hall. Empezando en el sur, entre los dos y dos de la tarde. Solo quería levantarme en apoyo a la marcha de estudiantes este domingo y también felicitar a Ted Hayes, como muchos saben. Hemos batallado en los años, en los actos de los alcalde. Para ayudar a la desaparición de la pobreza. Cuando regresé a Washington, trabajando en el desarrollo de la ciudad, haciendo programas para los pocos, trabajamos juntos. Ted y Juan, que va a continuar. Dices lo que piensas y necesitamos eso todo el tiempo. Y solo queremos decirle gracias. Agradecemos sus esfuerzos. Quiero darle a Wendy y a Janet Perry. Son grandes gentes. Me gustaría conocerlas. Gracias, señor presidente. También quiero darle las mejores deseos a Ted. Me planeo estar allí también. Le doy las mejores deseos a Janice Han cuando tuvimos nuestra concentración inicial. Y ella dijo que es muy difícil para nosotros hablar de cosas como cómo vamos a sanar una ciudad, hacer desarrollo económico cuando la gente simplemente no tiene lugar para vivir. Hablamos de mujeres y cuántos contratos tienen en la ciudad cuando tantos de ellos son desaparecidos con sus familias. Esto es, de nuevo, otro comienzo, pero estos comienzos tienen que seguir llegando una y otra vez hasta que finalmente tengamos un final. Gracias por su coraje y espero. También quiero homenajear a los estudiantes que están haciendo esto desde el Islamic Center también. En un momento en que tantos folk están mirando el mundo musulmán, a menudo con ojos desesperados, ver a estadounidenses de descendencia islámica aquí en la ciudad, tomando esta iniciativa de su propia fe por la paz y la justicia en este país es algo inspirador para todos nosotros. Así que gracias, Ted. Gracias.
Gracias, señora Perry. La presidenta reconoce a la señora.
Tengo uno más, solo uno más. Tengo a alguien muy especial aquí hoy. Antes de empezar a hablar sobre los detalles de la señora Ecuador, quería introducir... Quiero introducir a los miembros del Club Ambato. Y si pueden todos levantarse. Tenemos a los miembros del Directorio de la Club Ambato. Tenemos al señor Lisandro Quintana. El señor que es presidente, todos. Y a su madre también, a su madre también. El señor Marco López, vicepresidente. La señora Victoria LePisto, secretaria. La señora Chui Borja, coordinadora. El señor Franklin Figueroa, secretario de Asuntos Públicos. Lali Nicolade, Blanca de Bermudas. Marlene Figueroa, y Gallo Romero. Bien, genial, genial. Estoy muy contenta hoy de presentar a alguien muy especial. Ella es invitada honrada de la gran nación de Ecuador, la señora Ecuador de 2001 a 2002, Jessica Bermudas, damosle un mano. Y siempre me gusta reconocer a las mujeres de logros. A los 23 años, Jessica ya ha logrado muchas cosas extraordinarias en su vida, personalmente y en nombre de su país. Sus logros y su dedicación al pueblo de Ecuador hacen que sea una voz ideal y apropiada para su pueblo. La educación está en su lista de prioridades alta, y ella graduó magna cum laude de la Universidad de Guayaquil con títulos en marketing y ingeniería. Así que es inteligente y hermosa. En 1999, ella ganó una beca para asistir al Instituto Roehampton de los graduados de Londres, donde ella ganó más credenciales en marketing para organizaciones no lucrativas. Su educación la llevó a su actual posición como asesor para el puerto de Guayaquil, en el proyecto 200. El proyecto es un programa de reconstrucción urbana importante cerca de la frontera del puerto. Jessica también estaba en la frente de solicitar y obtener más financiación para este proyecto esencial de la Universidad de Oxford, Departamento de Reconstrucción Urbana. Hoy, ella contribuye a su comunidad. Ella fundó y dirige nuestra organización, una organización no lucrativa que ayuda a promover proyectos de desarrollo en las ciudades pequeñas de Ecuador. Estos proyectos incluyen la construcción de instalaciones médicas para centros de atención prenatal que son vitales para mejorar la calidad de vida de los niños y las familias en Ecuador. Con la ayuda del Club Ambato de Los Angeles, una organización no lucrativa, Jessica establece contactos con la comunidad ecuatoriana en la zona de California sur. Juega la colaboración de Jessica y los miembros del Club Ambato alcanzando aproximadamente 180.000 individuos de Ecuador y los educando sobre el proyecto de la desaparición de los homeless. Jessica Bermudas es una representante dinámica, pasiva y devota del pueblo de Ecuador, y estoy seguro de que continuará esta dedicación y compromiso mientras sirve como representante ecuatoriano y para el resto de su vida. Quiero saludarla, y sé que solo está al principio de su labor, y felicitaciones.
Colegues, quiero agradecer a la gente de la ciudad, este grupo tan ilustrado. Quiero darle el consejo, porque no podemos perder la condena de Cuenca en su desfile, y para más. Agradecer cómo es nuestra ciudad, Ecuador tiene una publicación internacional increíble. Tenemos a las ciudades de New York, Jersey, Boston, Connecticut, Los Angeles, todas comunican. Así que para fortalecer esta ciudad internacional, esta comunidad, quiero agradecer a la gente de la ciudad, a la comunidad turca, a su legado como cultura rica, muchas gracias. Gracias consejo.
Buenas tardes, damas y caballeros, miembros del Consejo, Jane Perry. Señor presidente Alex Padilla. Miembro del Consejo Ed Reyes. Nuestro alcalde Victor Vallejo, del Departamento de Planificación de la Ciudad de Los Angeles. Muchas gracias por este reconocimiento, bienvenida a mí. Esto solo es parte de mi vida, y yo me siento cómodo con este trabajo. Para mí es muy especial, y tengo que dar las gracias para la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Yo sé que la ciudad de Los Ángeles me dio la oportunidad de estar aquí y disfrutar estos momentos. Soy de Ecuador, en el medio del mundo, y de aquí tengo que decirles, bienvenidos a Ecuador, a todos los ecuatorianos, y a todos la gente ecuatoriana. Dile muchas gracias a los ángeles, para que tengan algún soporte, para nosotros trabajando muy duro, para la gente pobre. Ese congreso solamente quieres que tenga un mantener. Una vuelta en esta playa. Tengo que mantener mi trabajo para ayudar a las personas pobres en Ecuador. Muchas gracias, y Dios te bendiga. Y también, desde el medio del mundo, tengo que dar una reconocida especial al consejo Jane Perry. Esto es por la ciudad de Los Ángeles, pero también es especial para mí. Lo mantengo en mi banda todo el año, entonces muy especial. Y simboliza la relación entre Estados Unidos y Ecuador. Esta es Jane Perry, para usted y para la ciudad de Los Angeles.
Señor García.
Muchas gracias, muchas gracias por haber recibido a Ecuador en su casa. Me siento muy complacida por este reconocimiento. A todos ustedes, que Dios les bendiga siempre, se despide ustedes, Jessica Bermudas, señora Ecuador. Mi verdadera agradecimiento, de Jessica Bermudas, señora Ecuador, y siempre de la gente ecuatoriana, muchas gracias.
Felicitaciones y bienvenidos a Los Angeles, señora Bermudas, bienvenida.
Mi distrito tiene muchos ecuatorianos que me van a llegar, están aquí en el templo de Mariana. Muchos bienvenidos a parte de la ciudad.
Señor Holden.
Señor Holden.
Los Ángeles.
Muchos ecuatorianos. En Washington, en la bouladeo de Crenshaw, le voy a cortar, lo tienen que ver.
Señor Labonte.
Siento más que de estar junto al señor Holden, no necesita ningún escudo para los amigos. Bienvenidos por la gran conseja de...
Gracias, señora Perry, la ciudad reconoce al productor de música, Hannah.
Una presentación adicional.
Gracias, señor presidente, miembros del consejo. Me siento extremadamente honora y privilegiada para hacer esta presentación hoy. Tengo lo que probablemente es uno de los más memorables experiencias. Realmente en mi vida, el miércoles, cuando estaba, pude... A bordo de la USS Pellaloo, cuando vino a... A través de la puerta de los ángeles, vino el puerto de Los Ángeles. Para quedar por cinco días ahí. Pude, estuve a bordo de este gran barco, con el capitán, y los 1100 marineros y marines que habían recortado de su sexta semana de viaje de servicio en Afganistán. Ayudando a luchar nuestra guerra contra el terrorismo allí. Y debo decirte que cuando me preguntaron la crew, estaba allí con la atención en este gran hangar, no podía, pero cuando estaba viendo las caras de todos esos hombres y mujeres, cómo terriblemente importantes y valientes han sido en estar allí, en las líneas de frente, luchando esta guerra. Todavía tengo dificultades para decir las palabras adecuadas para expresar la degrado que creo que todos debemos, no solo estos hombres y mujeres, pero a todos los hombres y mujeres del... Que no vacilan por un momento cuando se les llama, para ayudar a preservar la libertad, no solo aquí, pero... Como dije, estos hombres y mujeres salieron como... Y vuelven a casa como nuestros héroes. Y qué sorprendente es tener la USS Pellaloo, una magnífica nave en el barro de San Pedro durante los próximos días, mientras vamos a ser invitados a los marineros y marineros mientras ellos puedan divertirse en el área de Los Angeles. El alcalde, en la ocasión de la nave entrar en nuestro barro, ha declarado el 17 de mayo hasta el 21 de abril como Días Navals de Los Angeles en celebración de los hombres y mujeres de la Navy y los marines de los Estados Unidos que sirven en todo el mundo, preservando la libertad estadounidense. Y el hecho de que la Liga de la Navy de Los Angeles ha sido responsable de traer esta nave a nuestro barro, vamos a honrarlos hoy. Y ahora me gustaría honrar a las personas muy especiales que tienen algo que ver con esta nave. La primera persona que estoy honrando para presentarte esta mañana es el capitán Dennis Dubard. Y desde que entró en la Navy en 1977, el capitán Dubard ha servido en el mar y en el aire durante toda su carrera destacada. Recipiente de tres premios de servicio merecedores y la Medalla de Comendación del Ejército y Marina. Ahora es el capitán de la USS Pellaloo, que, como dije, fui privilegiada para estar a bordo el otro día. Y realmente me gustaría homenajear al capitán Dubard por su liderazgo y capacidad como él llevó a estas tropas en Afganistán.
Señor Weiss.
Señor Weiss.
Si puedo, por un momento, señora, antes de que concluyamos con el resto de tu presentación, solo quiero decirle a estos señores que nuestras palabras, nuestro tiempo, nuestras expresiones de gratitud hoy son verdaderamente lo menos que podemos hacer para ustedes. Es esencial que hagamos eso, pero es esencial que reconozcamos que ninguno de nosotros, y ninguno de los ciudadanos de Los Angeles nunca vamos a poder expresarles a ustedes cuánto estamos en su deuda, y expresarle cuánto apreciamos lo que hacemos todos los días. Es quizás un poquito de vergüenza que se tome la guerra para que nosotros reconozcamos que día tras día, estás navegando realmente en camino a la pelea, y día tras día, en el tiempo de la guerra, tú, entre millones y millones de personas que viven en este país, estamos un llamado de ser enviados otra vez a la pelea. Y el conflicto en el que estamos ahora es un conflicto que todos nosotros presumimos que no durará semanas o años. Pero años, y quizás por todos ustedes se van a encontrar otra vez con mucho tiempo que ha pasado en combate haciendo su misión. Es extraordinario, estoy parado aquí, todo ustedes lo que hacen ustedes. Y yo sé que mucha gente, mucha gente en la ciudad de los años que nunca van a contarse, nunca van a estar, se sienten las manantones, muchas gracias por este...
Señor Zain. Gracias, señor presidente, colegas. También estoy honrado y reconocido por lo que han hecho para proporcionar la libertad a este país, la libertad de elección, la libertad de religión, la libertad de educación, la libertad de calidad de vida, y todo lo que tomamos por granted. Y sé que el personal en su barco son muy jóvenes, muy dedicados, y están sacrificando a sus familias, a sus amigos, y a veces sus vidas para mantener la libertad que tenemos aquí en América. Como ustedes ven, nosotros estamos volando banderas aquí en nuestros carros. Y no vamos a bajar esas banderas. Lo que representas es lo que América es todo acerca, coraje, valentía, esfuerzos heroicos. Y cuando piensas en viajar a un país extranjero y enfrentar un combate a una base continua y no sabiendo las consecuencias, estás dispuesto a hacer ese sacrificio para que podamos disfrutar de la libertad de elección y las libertades. Es lo que esta ciudad es todo acerca. A los miembros de tu crew y todos los personal militar, nuestros corazones se dan, nuestras oraciones se dan. Para el regreso seguro de todos los militares, pueden volver a la vida civil, perseguir sus carreras, reunir con sus familias, y sé que todos esperan eso. Que Dios esté con ustedes y su personal militar a través de esta crisis, vuelvan a nosotros seguros y sintonizados, y reunan la libertad y la democracia que todos disfrutamos todos los días. Dios les bendiga, muchas gracias. Muchas gracias. Gracias consejo Mahan, realmente aprecio la oportunidad aquí, aprecio lo que has hecho por nosotros, y ella tuvo un muy buen tiempo a bordo de la Pellaloo. Sé que estábamos fuera durante siete meses, la nave navegó en agosto de last año y regresó en marzo de este año. Pero aunque la nave está aportada en San Diego, California, muchos de mis marineros y marineros a bordo de la Pellaloo y del 15º Experiencia de la Marina son de la zona de Los Angeles, y puedo decirles que muchas veces cuando caminaba a través de la nave durante ese despliegue, veía tarjetas y letras, y miles y miles de ellos eran de Los Angeles, California. Así que sé que fuimos los recipients de muchos, muchos pensamientos y oraciones y homenajes de los ciudadanos de esta gran ciudad, y solo quiero decir en nombre de los marineros y marineros de la USS Pellaloo, gracias por eso, ha sido una gran cosa para nosotros hacer eso, ver eso, saber que muchas personas aquí se encargan. Y francamente, no quiero molestar a este pequeño tipo aquí, el hermano de la sergeanta mayor, pero francamente, lo que hacemos como, para nosotros, y lo que hacemos es asegurarnos de que ese pequeño tipo pueda crecer y vivir en un mundo libre de tiranía y terrorismo. Por eso hacemos nuestro trabajo, pero nuevamente, muchas gracias. Y tengo solo una cosa rápida, ella navegó en la Pellaloo, y tenemos una presentación rápida para ella, y es presentada por Jane Hahn, consejera del Distrito Número 15 de la ciudad de Los Angeles, de los hombres y mujeres de la USS Pellaloo. También tenemos pruebas de imagen de que ella estaba allí, un pequeño libro de imagen de nosotros para ti.
Gracias, capitán. También me gustaría presentar este mañana al capitán David Romley. El capitán Romley es un veterano de edad de 13 años del ejército de Estados Unidos. Ha servido como expresidente para el 15º Experiencia de Marina en Afganistán, que fue la primera fuerza general convencional utilizada por los Estados Unidos en la guerra contra el terrorismo. En esta función, él gestiona más de 100 organizaciones de noticias internacionales. Por favor, adelante, capitán.
En nombre de los marinos del 15º, ustedes que han regresado de Afganistán, solo quiero reiterar, muchas gracias a la comunidad de Los Angeles por proporcionarnos todo el apoyo a través de los tarjetas y las letras que el capitán mencionó anteriormente. No puedo transmitir a ustedes el impacto que tiene una marina parada en la batalla, con una arma, fresando el pelo de la cabeza allí. Es significativamente, es significativamente importante, así que a todos, muchas gracias.
Y ahora me gustaría honrar a la organización de Los Angeles que en realidad ayudó a hacer esto posible al invitar a la USS Pellaloo a venir a San Pedro, y esa es la Liga de la Navy. Me gustaría presentar cofundador de Días Navals de LA y ex presidente de la Cámara de la Navy de LA de Hollywood, Anthony Pearson. Anthony es el arma de la financiación de este evento, y es probablemente por eso que fue tan exitoso. Y me gustaría presentarte con este certificado de apreciación del ciudadano. También firmado por el alcalde. Also signed by the mayor.
As you know, the Navy League is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year, and it is for the benefit of all sailors, Marines, Coast Guard, and maritime services. So this is a really terrific opportunity. Get involved, and you'll see a lot of things in the Navy League this year in magazines and come out. Anyway, we really want to thank you very much for your support and coming to all these meetings and working with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'd like to also honor two other co-founders of Naval Days Los Angeles, Tony Chris and Grant Ivy. If you'll join me. Tony, a longtime friend of mine, is currently the president of the South Bay Turrets Navy League Council. And Tony also organizes pure-side welcome ceremonies, which we had on Wednesday, right? It included the San Pedro High School band. And Grant is the director of the Navy League and a director of the Santa Barbara Navy League Council. His work in organizing Naval Days Los Angeles has truly made this program a great celebration of our entire Navy and Marines. Tony.
Ladies and gentlemen of Los Angeles, I salute you and the marvelous reception that you provided for these wonderful people. They're here, they're having a great time and they'll remember the city for the rest of their lives. Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the support. The Navy League, you know, there's a misconception you do not have to be a member or have been a member of any armed services to become. If you'd like to go to www.navyleague.org, we appreciate it.
Before we have this next presentation, I would also just like to give a plug for the Los Angeles Port Pilots. That was also a great thrill to be on the bridge as one of our LA port pilots boarded the Pellaloo and guided it into our Los Angeles harbor. They performed a great duty, day in, day out, in the harbor of Los Angeles. We now have a very special presentation in our council chambers this morning. We have an inspiring memorial of a life's loss on September 11th. We are pleased to welcome one of the three Ground Zero Flags that have become recognized worldwide as the during memorial to our lost veterans. A flag that is with us today was found at Ground Zero by NYPD Detective Peter Conlin. Having rescued it, Detective Conlin took it to the emergency services headquarters, where families and friends of the victims began signing it with messages to their loved ones. The flag was then raised on the USS Tann and was carried ashore by US Marines. It was also raised over the Condahare Airport to mark a key victory over the forces of terrorism. Today, we are privileged to welcome this great symbol to Los Angeles and to reflect on the price of freedom and the sacrifices of those who fought to preserve it. One of the very touching moments aboard the USS Pellaloo on Wednesday was the unfurling of this flag on the deck.
Council members, we could use your help this flag that is twelve by eighteen. Twelve by eighteen. And we would like to invite you to come along and be part of this story. As you do, Mr. Holden. Mr. Holden, would you say a few words to the council members?
President members, I'd like to join Ms. Han. I'm the entire city council. People of the city of Los Angeles welcoming you to the city council chambers, acknowledging you, thanking you for all the good work you've done for America, for our country. And you know, you really put it all on the line. A lot of folks talk, but you do, you act. And we can here negotiate in peace without any threat that we will lose our lives when you put yours on the line out there on the fire line. It's just wonderful. I think all of us in our generation before you, served our military duties in PTA, European Theater of Operation, and there was just three or four guys in the Navy I want to mention. There was a guy named, has a career for you, politics. President Johnson, President Kennedy. There was another guy named Supervisor Kenneth Han. Janice's father ran for office in his Navy uniform and was elected. So, thank you, and when you finish this tour of duty, I'm sure, you will know this, you can always become elected official of service. Thank you.
Unfurling.
Okay, I just wanted to say something also before you do that. First of all, as a born and bred New Yorker, once you're a born and bred New Yorker, you're always a New Yorker, even when you're also a Los Angeleno. And I appreciate the fact that the military has been brought in, and I hope that in the future you will be able to be a force for making peace instead of war. I don't think... We all want to support you. We all know it's a tough job. We know that the public safety forces have a tough job and the military has a tough job. But your job would be easier if we were able to focus our efforts more on making peace than on making war. And I know that all of you who have to get out there every day will join me in that sentiment.
Thank you, Ms. Han and all members. This flag is in very good hands now. We have some additional presentations today. Chair recognizes Mr. Weiss.
Mr. President, colleagues, I'm very pleased to be here with my good friend Dennis Zine to honor a legend from the Los Angeles Police Department, Ronald Carpenter, who has retired after 33 years in the LAPD's Van Nuys Division. He is an extraordinary and impressive example of how officers can have a real, meaningful connection to the communities they serve. This man to my right, Ron Carpenter, he truly is community policing in the very best and most impressive sense of the term. And we're really pleased to be joined up here by Ron's wife Marilyn. Thank you for joining us. Let me tell you a little bit about Ron Carpenter. He graduated from John Francis Polytechnic High School in 1965. He attended Pierce College and graduated from Moore Park College in '75. He enlisted in the Navy Reserve with the Seabees and served two tours of duty in Vietnam and was honorably discharged in 1971. Because of those two tours, I guess you were unable to service or to begin your service with the LAPD before you finished your service with the United States, and you began with the LAPD in 1969. And you were assigned to the Van Nuys Patrol, and you continue to serve all of your career years in the Van Nuys Division. Ron was twice selected as Officer of the Year for the Van Nuys area in 1978 and 1981. And he has received numerous, numerous commendations from officials throughout his career. And my colleague, Mr. Zine, is going to say a little bit about that and some other things about Ron in a moment. But none of the commendations that you received, I think, can mean more than the commendations you received from people in the community. And I was so privileged to be at the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association a few weeks ago when the outpouring you saw from people who lived in that community for you, you as a person, you as a community member, you as a problem solver, you as someone who cared about their daily lives, about their community, about their quality of life. I can't imagine that anything would be more touching and more meaningful to a police officer than knowing that you earned the undying respect, devotion, and gratitude of the people whom you served for decades. Thank you very much, Ron Carpenter.
Thank you, Jack. I know Ron from my days with the LAPD working at Valley Traffic Division and that parallel Van Nuys Division. And I've known Ron for many, many years. And Ron is one of those individuals who gave his time to his country as a member of the military and then went on to public service as a member of the Los Angeles Police Department, where he served with distinction. And I'll never forget the day after September 11th, and I mentioned this at Ron's retirement party, where I was traveling down Ventura Boulevard and I got to Van Nuys Boulevard and I was trying to find American flags. I get a little choked up when I think about it. And Ron is leaving a flag, AAA banner there at Van Nuys Ventura Boulevard, and he's putting flags on his car, flag his son in his police car to show his patriotism. So we chatted, we went down to the Starbucks. The officer used to go to Winster's, but now it's Starbucks. Cafe, latte, and croissant instead of a dime. So we put out a radio call for all Van Nuys units to come to the Starbucks, where Ron and I distributed American flags to the black and whites, where they attach those flags to the antennas and resume patrol in the Van Nuys Division. And it's through that teamwork, through that dedication to his commitment to the Van Nuys community over those many, many years that Ron has truly made a difference. And I know he and his wife are going to join his retirement. He's done his service to the country. He's done his service to the people of Los Angeles. And we send you, Ron, with your pension, your lovely wife Marilyn by your side, to enjoy the years that you have earned. You have weathered the storm. You have battled the bad guys, and you survived them well. God bless you and your family in years of retirement.
After being in the department for 33 years, it's called by fast, and it's been a pleasure to work with the community and to be associated with the great police department for all these years and to work for a great council and the mayor and distinguished congressmen. Mr. Weiss and Mr. Zine. And again, I want to thank you all for this honor. My wife and I have enjoyed it.
Chair recognizes next Mr. Zine for presentation. Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I'm going to be joined by my colleague, Councilmember Miss Akowski.
and representatives from the Los Angeles Police Department Revolver Athletic Club. If you'll please come forward. We have the distinguished Commander George Gaskon. And Terry, you are in charge of Government Affairs for LAPRAC, Los Angeles Police Revolver Athletic Club. And what we're presenting today is a resolution recognizing the Police Revolver Athletic Club. And a little history, the Revolver Athletic Club, commonly known as LAPRAC, was established in nineteen-thirty-one. And it was designed to provide training, organization for all sworn Los Angeles officers. And this is the facility that rests behind Dodger Stadium and Leash Park. The United States Olympic Organizing Committee donated equipment and facilities from the nineteen-thirty-two Olympic game to LAPRAC, which is now the world-renowned Los Angeles Police Academy. And that expanded the training programs. LAPRAC's mission is to encourage the highest level of professional law enforcement skills by providing athletic, educational, marksmanship, physical fitness facilities, recreation, and social benefits to all members of the Los Angeles Police Department. LAPRAC is a major sponsor and organizer of the Baker to Vegas Challenge Cup Relay, which is now entering its eighteenth year and organizes one of the largest sporting events involving law enforcement in the world. Baker to Vegas donates funds and books to the Baker School District, the I Have a Dream Foundation in Las Vegas, and the Blind Children's Center in Los Angeles. Baker to Vegas has become an international event with participation of law enforcement agencies from such countries as Australia and England. This year's race, which will be held this weekend, starting in Baker, California, at the Big Thermometer and concluding on the Strip in Las Vegas and Nevada, will host over two hundred teams of twenty members each, representing agencies of law enforcement, including our own District Attorney's Office and judges from the LA County Superior Court. Baker to Vegas is recognized for the fine work in bringing law enforcement members together. And we want to acknowledge the hundreds of volunteers who are the heart and soul of this world-class race. We are proud to announce that this year's race will include a team from New York City Police Department to honor the heroes of September eleventh. We salute the Los Angeles Police Revolver Athletic Club, its board of directors, the hundreds of participants, volunteers, staff, and sponsors for their commitment to promote wellness and a spirit of friendly competition and camaraderie among law enforcement professionals. The resolution signed by members of the council illustrates what cooperation the Police Revolver Athletic Club has done over the years. And I have participated in the Baker to Vegas race for a number of years, not as a runner, but as a photographer. But to think of, thank you Cindy, Cindy knows I'm not a long-distance runner, one hundred and twenty miles through the desert. And you will find these teams in competition with the follow vehicles. And they run day and night until they reach the Strip in Las Vegas. And they have a huge awards ceremony with approximately ten thousand in attendance at the host hotel. And it's really a spectacular event where you see all these law enforcement from FBI, LAPD, County Sheriff, all the different departments, Beverly Hills, Inglewood, all over this region and throughout the country participate in this. It is really a spectacular event. It shows the cooperation, the camaraderie, the spirit of togetherness and public safety. And be receiving, this will be the two representatives from Revolver Athletic Club. And I'd like to ask my colleague, the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, which is intricately involved in public safety for our fine city, to say a few words. And maybe Cindy, you want to participate as one of the volunteers and not a runner like me. There you go.
Thank you, Dennis. This is, it's become a wonderful tradition that we honor the Los Angeles Police Revolver Athletic Club, LAPRAC, as we send them off to the competition. As Dennis has said, there are hundreds of people locally are volunteers, thousands of people across the country, thousands of police officers, public safety officers throughout the country who participate. But the spirit, the camaraderie, the enthusiasm, and the high degree of morale among our team competitors of bringing back and many occasions some of the top prizes in many of the different categories is something that's also been exciting. So we hope you come back with the results and that we can have some of the people who did participate here after this weekend. But let me just say that not only congratulations to the efforts in putting this on again and participating, but the best of luck, good luck to all of our police officer members who are going to be running, not just watching. And we hope that we can bring some of them to you in the next following weeks. So talking about their efforts.
It is with great pleasure today that I'm here to accept this on behalf of the LAPRAC, as an eighteen-year member of LAPRAC and someone that actually has participated in the race as a runner, as well as a support team member. We're very proud of this event. It is a very special event for us. And it does bring the police department and law enforcement in general together. LAPRAC is one of the few institutions within the Los Angeles Police Department has been in constant for many years in bringing the morale of the troops and bringing police officers together and enhancing.
Thank you, Ms. Zine. Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members. This is a very important person, very important. She's a pretty tough woman. She's doing what you all should be doing. She's doing what you all should be doing. Protecting, saving our environment. In 1996, when the city, President members. Environmental Protection Agency. Department of Transportation. They're looking to establish Brownfield. The United States of America. And Councilman Farrar and I. We made the motion to request that the city of Los Angeles submit a proposal to become one of the recipients. And for Tom LaBarnes, I just want to say that. Everything that Tom Farrar and I did was a positive note. He never said a bad thing about me, even in jest. But I was very pleased to note that, I'm very pleased to note that when it was the President, he had a lot of influence on me and Department of Transportation. His personal name was the Secretary of Transportation at the time. And I went back to Washington having that. And urged the EPA that I met with, their representative, and also representative of the Department of Transportation to include Los Angeles in the Brownfield program. And I just want to go on to say that the goals of the Los Angeles Brownfield program is to develop effective strategies to enable development of properties with either real or perceived environmental problems, known as Brownfields, throughout Los Angeles, but particularly in disadvantaged communities. And to incorporate these strategies into the city's normal redevelopment process. The city has created a Brownfields team with members from Community Redevelopment Agency, Environmental Affairs Department, the Chief of Legislative Analysis, CLA, Ron Deaton, the Community Development Department, the Mayor's Office of Economic Development, the City Council Office, and other departments and agencies. As these, Mr. President, members. Because the city is a federal Brownfield showcase community. It was able to receive the loans of a federal staff person under the Intergovernmental Personnel Act. In this case, an engineer, Priscilla Perry. Better known as Jan Perry. Was loaned to the city by the Army Corps of Engineers for a full time for two years. Ms. Perry, from February of two thousand. Perry worked as the community developer agency's supervisor of environmental assessment of Brownfields properties. Her assignment with the city is nine. And the city wants to recognize Ms. Perry for the outstanding assistance she gave us. Ms. Perry was outstanding effectively in working with property owners, redevelopment agencies, contractors, and state regulators in moving projects into the city's Good Year Track Brownfield project and several other Brownfields sites. In brief, in a brief time that she was here with us, she processed thirty assessments of environmentally impacted Brownfields properties, some of which were very large, complex, and difficult. Perry tireless attention and rigorous evaluation of contracts worked, saved the city and the city's Brownfield program tens of thousands of dollars. Perry also worked to build a partnership between the city and the Army Corps that helped the city understand and access other ACO programs. Perry professionally is a child. I can see that. Have endeared her to the redevelopment agencies, the city staff, that were privileged to work with her. She has taught us much that will permanently benefit the Brownfield team. We have with her, Mr. President, members, her husband, Olifus Olafias Perry. He's a big guy, too. And we also have. 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 And we also have.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm representing Ms. Detrick Allen, the manager of the Environmental Affairs Department, who asked me to convey her personal thanks to Priscilla for stepping in and working on the Brownfield program. The bottom line to her work is that she has worked very diligently and she has saved the city a lot of money in negotiating with regulators and with our contractors. And we're going to miss her all very, very much.
Mr. President, members, we will. I want to say two things. First of all, Priscilla came to us as a federal employee. She taught us a little bit how to talk federal. I think she taught us how to talk local. It was a very good collaboration. Our engineering staff very much appreciated her work. The agency, we all did. Secondly, I want to thank the Army Corps of Engineers. They really stepped to the table and provided a very competent and talented person to us. Brownfield sites are very difficult and very complicated to bring back to productive communities. And the Army Corps of Engineers is to commend their efforts for making this kind of town better. Thank you. Sir Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, the great council member, the tenth district. I'm proud to be able to join you today. Praising the work of Mrs. Perry. Brownfield's work as Chair of Economic Development. Brownfield's work is probably some of the most complex, difficult work folks can do when you look at regulations that are placed. When you look at chemical and other physical complexities as well. And what you've done for the city is not just clean up Brownfields. We actually get a two forever. Clean up places that have been polluted or that are hazardous. But we also get to them, build something in infrastructure that is already there. Instead of building out, it's rather further. We get to have even more development. Parks and housing things right there in our community. Where it's much cheaper than building new infrastructure further out. So I want to thank you very much for that, Ms. Perry. And maybe you can let us know whether to move to the local or federal.
Ms. Perry. Sir Appa, sir Appa.
I'd like to thank the council, the council of Holden and the Sir Garcia. And the redevelopment agency, the Department of Environmental Affairs Department, the Mayor's Department of Economic Development. And the community redevelopment office. Many of you know the Army Corps of Engineers for its rivers and ponds and its wetlands. But I stand before you to say that the Army Corps is well alive cleaning up the environment of all the communities. I came aboard two years ago. With twenty-one years in the silver environmental arena. To help the city of Los Angeles within Brownfield's program. It was an enormous task. I enjoyed it. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done. Cleaning up the communities around us. But we stand here ready for the task. So I'd like to thank you again for this two-year endeavor. And working with the city of Los Angeles. And I would not say goodbye, but until we meet each other again. Thank you.
Mr. President, members, you got that. And you should be glad to know that the federal employees are professional. The greatest service to local governments throughout the country. No matter who sits in the White House. Even though it was Bill Clinton's administration that's got this program underway. Certainly is the Bush administration that carries on. And they're all doing a good job for us, no matter what administration. Thank you. I'd like to thank you once again. We want to say no, therefore we resolve by the city of Los Angeles expresses its deep appreciation and utmost thank you. For Priscilla Perry. For a tireless and exceptional police service. On behalf of the city, its businesses and citizens. Thank you again. Muchas gracias.
Chair recognizes Mr. Lavine.
Mr. President, members of council, the distinguished guests in council chambers today. We have one of the great citizens of the United States, the state of California, especially the county of Los Angeles and the city of Los Angeles as well. But please welcome a hundred-two-years-old young Ms. Sybil Brand. She's assisted by her longtime friend, Ron Ingram, who some of us know for his good activities. Sybil, it's nice to have you here. And as you know, she has been involved in many activities throughout the county of Los Angeles. I'm going to call the great councilwoman of the fifteenth district, who has a great legacy with the county. Great father, Janice Hahn, for some words of remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Lavine. And I am very pleased to also be celebrating this great humanitarian hundred-and-second birthday. And. Sybil Brand has done many things in her life for those who least have a voice in our society. And Sybil Brand was a friend of my father, Kenny Hahn, for as long as I remember. The thing that Sybil did that I think most exemplified making sure that everyone in our society gets Sybil treatment was when she accepted the position of institution. was when she accepted the position of institution inspection. Nobody wanted that position. Nobody thought it was a very good position. But she accepted. And one of the first things she realized was the conditions in our jail for our women and our juveniles was deplorable. And up until this time, there wasn't enough space for the women, and they had to bunk together, and the conditions were deplorable. And at that time, we weren't caring about those who were incarcerated in the county of Los Angeles. She came and reported and said, "We must do something. These women deserve dignity, even while they're in jail." And so she was the one that lobbied, helped pass a bond measure and lobbied elected officials, my father being one of those, to build a brand-new jail for women, which was state-of-the-art at that time for women inmates. And rightly so, it was named after her, the Sybil Brand Institute. I believe she's the only woman alive that's had a jail named after her. So, thank you, Sybil Brand, for taking care of what the Bible calls the basic things in our society. Because they deserve equal treatment as well. Thank you, Sybil.
Gracias.
This is the recommendation. Councilmember Han and myself. I have on behalf of the mayor of the city of Los Angeles, James Han, the honor of on behalf of all Angeles and the president, to salute Sybil Brand and call it a Sybil Brand Day in the city of Los Angeles by James Han. There's the city of Los Angeles. And also, Sybil, we've arranged for a beautiful cake in State Farm. We'll bring it out right here. This is from the great thirteenth district, the Rolling Pin Bakery. Sybil, this cake was your beautiful picture. Made by all the gang out in the Rolling Pin. Let's sing. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Stand up. Happy birthday, dear Sybil. Happy birthday to you. Ms. Skrul.
I just wanted to add my comments to that of my colleagues to Sybil Brand. I met you and I when I was just eighteen on the mayor chief advisory council that Tom and I both were on, learning about juvenile justice and learning about how important it was for people to take care of those individuals and women and found out about the Sybil Brand. So I just want to add my congratulations for all that you've done in the last twenty-two years and what a difference you've made in the lives of the Los Angeles here. Thank you so much, Sybil, for all that you've done. And happy birthday.
Mr. Holden. Mr. President, members, I had the pleasure to introduce the hard staff. It was there that I mentioned Sybil Brand. You know, she was not a supervisor. But I got to tell you, she always acted like one. And when she walked in there, the whole administration, Sybil Brand spoke, they all listened. And I looked around and they were all standing in attention when they were pretty much in the boardroom. There was Sybil Brand on there talking. Who's that, Sybil Brand? And when she was able to encourage them to get into the institute, women who were housed with dignity in those jails where they were before. Kenny would express it that way. Sybil Brand who said they were dignified, even though they had violated regulations in the community. And you are to be remembered and commended for all the good work. These people here have no idea what you've done. And you were one of three drivers. I know that. They all retired. They reached the age and they had to go. But I just want you to know that I remember and I thank you for all the men and women and people of my district in the entire city. All you've done for all of us. Over the years. Also, Mr. President, Sybil was born in Chicago, came to Los Angeles a hundred-one years ago when she was one-year-old. Could we be so lucky to live to be a hundred-two and be as sweet as you? But here's someone who tries to be sweet every day. He calls us home and he lets us go. Please welcome the great Ron Ingram.
First of all, let me say that Sybil won a great knowledge. Two great people, one in this room. Many, many years ago, in court to late Kenny Hunt. There's one thing inside the door of Chester Cathedral in England that describes her. Old brother man teaches nine-hundred brothers. Or peace and beauty dwell. There is a piece of God. Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Labonte. Ms. Han. Chair recognizes this final presentation. Mr. Garcetti. I think there's one more by Mr. Labonte. And I want Eric to help me on. Because there's seamless energy between Eric and I as the fourth district moves back to the thirteenth district. And if there's no bridges that need to be built there, but a great program run by Bridges is someone that Gloria Lockhart has been so involved in. And we're going to call Gloria up here right now. Since nineteen ninety-seven, Gloria's worked at the Children's Hospital in Los Angeles. She's been very much involved with helping young people throughout Hollywood. She's the director and the director of LA Bridges Youth Violence Prevention Gang intermention program. On her direction, the program has achieved great success at Bancroft Middle School in the Hollywood area and also at La Conde Middle School in Hollywood in council district thirteen. Under her leadership, both in La Conde Bancroft, she has recognized that vital research is necessary to do the work to help young people and make a difference in their lives. Prior to working on LA Bridges program, Gloria served from nineteen ninety-two through nineteen ninety-seven as a community relations coordinator for the Los Angeles Alliance for a Drug-Free Community. Well, she also served with the greater Hollywood and Los Angeles community in that capacity as well. It's my pleasure to join, Mr. Garcetti, and salute Gloria Lockhart for her work and adoption of this resolution and wish her well in her future endeavors and a lot of great health and happiness all the way. A big hand for G L O R I A, Gloria Lockhart. Just to add a little something. Gloria would never come on her own. And you see represented behind her, her work and her hopes and her partners in the community. Gloria led the Hollywood Peace March. I don't know if many of you know this, but they'll be suppressed over hopefully today. The Episcopal Church today started a hands-in-healing tour across the country with twelve young people from Los Angeles who will be stopping throughout the country in Laramie-Wyoming and places where there's been intense violence in our community. But we have a pioneer just like that here who led the Hollywood Peace March, who was joined by these young people and her coworkers. And I'd like to recognize them, if I may, really quickly with all their names. And as I say your name, they'll just raise your hand for the folks at home. From La Conde Middle School, we have Maricela Lizama, Jesus Lizama, and Yehaida Ramirez. From Bancroft Middle School, you've got Jessica Andrade, Danny Juarez, Daniel Tapia, Francisco Amoraya, and Brenda Mora. We have Gloria, of course, and Saul Fernandez, who also works with her. From Mark Twain Middle School in CD six, we've got Jonathan Shaw, Alex Moreno, Olivia Romero. We've got a parent, Concepcion Quinera, and a staff member, Reggie Mann. From Barindo Middle School in CD one, we've got Maritza Garcia, Rayo Choa. We've got some staff, Olivia Sanchez. A parent, Evelyn Guerra. Case manager, Jasmine Hernandez. And a coordinator, Olivia Sanchez. And from Mount Vernon Middle School in the great tenth council district, Mr. Holden, we've got Jose Esquivel. We've got Johnny Piveral. We've got Alonso Zazuetta. Veronica Amaya, Courtney Cabrales, Billy Alfaro, and Tia Beasley. Parents Jennifer Cabrales, Adalina Alfaro. And staff Sergio Cuellar and Julie Hines. To all of them, please give a great hand for all they're doing to reduce violence in our community and the great Gloria Lockhart. Before you speak, Gloria Stevenson-Clark, not to be confused with you, Gloria. Both beautiful people who would like to speak about you.
Good morning, honorable council members. As the original director of LA Bridges, I just want to commend Gloria Lockhart for the hard work that she dedicated to the city of Los Angeles. Gloria brought extremely high energy and creativity to the program. And it's been an absolute pleasure to work with her. As you can see from these wonderful young people, the work that she's done will be long-lasting throughout the city. We commend her on behalf of the community development department.
Please go Gloria Lockhart.
Thank you. And I'd also like to say that I'm really just, I'm so proud and so happy. We also have my boss here, Susan Ravinevich. Where are you? And another colleague from the Children's Hospital, Arlene Share. So I'd like to just say to the fine members of the city council, on behalf of the Hollywood LA Bridges Youth Violence Prevention Program, which is headed by the Division of Adolescent Medicine at Children's Hospital Los Angeles, I humbly accept the resolution from council member Tom Labonte. Thank you. And council member Eric Garcetti. Since the inception of LA Bridges in nineteen ninety-seven, boy, we've been here a long time. Our six community partners and our staff and our three sites, Bancroft Middle School, La Conde Middle School, and the Family Resource Center in Hollywood, has worked very, very hard to fulfill the mission of this program as set forth by our friend, council member Mark Ridley Thomas. And I thank him, and we thank him, for his vision. Our program covers two council districts. So I'd just like to personally thank council member Tom Labonte of Council District Four and council member Eric Garcetti of Council District Thirteen. The two of you have been very, very valuable in supporting our program. And whatever it is we need, you always come forth. And thank you so much. We appreciate you. And everyone standing behind me, there's power in numbers. Thank you, thank you, thank you. CDD, thank you for your support. Gloria Stevenson-Clark for pioneering the effort in nineteen ninety-seven. Thank you, Ruby Sertello, for actually initiating this resolution. And our five-year journey has been very challenging, but it's been very, very rewarding. Thank you, Anthony Boo of CDD and John Chavez and Greg Dimick. In conclusion, I'd like to say that as the best practice that we are, we are a model program now in Hollywood. We're proud to have changed the lives of thousands and thousands of youth and their families through case management, anger management classes, tutoring, parenting, family counseling, legal counseling, parent support groups, teen groups, field events, and mentoring activities. And I know that the Bridges programs from Mount Vernon and from Barindo and from Mark Twain and the Aztecs, which is Bridges Two, can attest also to what I'm saying. As we move into our sixth year, yep, we're in our sixth year. We look forward to some new and innovative programming and changes from our new director, John Chavez. Where's John? All right, John's our new director, our new leader. Passing the baton. And in conclusion, I'd just like to quote from one of our youth who's standing behind me. He started our program when he was thirteen years of age. He is now getting ready for college. Amazing. And the quote reads, "Through the LA Bridges program, my life started to change. My case manager and staff taught me how to control my anger and how to do better in school." For the first time in my life, someone was listening to me. Thank you, and I love all of you.
A nice reassuring thing, members of council, is we support good community programs. We don't have great people like Gloria and others doing the work. Doing the work for our young people in the remark. And who's that young person that said that beautiful line? Danny, come on up. Good job. That's the beautiful thing. And now you have someone that's going to listen and care about you. But each and every one of you is glorious folk. Have great eyes, have great aspirations, and great power. So take what you learn from the Bridges and carry on. And Johnny's going to say something right here. Come up here, Johnny. Alonso.
Hello, my name is Johnny Pearl. And I'm the chair of the Nagmenis for the West Bureau and president of the LA Bridges Youth Leadership at Mount Vernon Middle School in Los Angeles High School. On behalf of LA Bridges and Mount Vernon Middle School, we would like to thank you for five years of service and giving the participants of LA Bridges a chance to grow and teaching us to become a strong community. There's a gift from us.
Hi, my name is Alonso Zazuetta. I'm a student at Los Angeles High School. And I would also like to thank the city council for supporting LA Bridges. And thank you.
Thank you all, Mr. President. Members of council, we have one requirement for these great young people on such a beautiful day as it is today in Los Angeles to go up to the tower at City Hall and look out to the great vision of this city. Look hard, think, and see about how beautiful it is. So let's give the great LA Bridges a hand. And Gloria, a great send-off right here. Come on back for photos. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. President, colleagues, last but certainly not least, hello. And I know council member Labonte, who's a former Atwater Village resident, is here in spirit as well. For Bob and Carol Nade and Eliza Dash, who are here today from the Los Feliz Hotel. And it gives me great honor to be able to honor you for the great work you've done in the community. And few communities are as lucky as Atwater to have such a great and recognized boutique hotel right there in the middle of our community. Something that has helped so many of our family members and friends who come and visit us or just folks who are coming to Atwater Village to experience what a wonderful community that is. And you have been such a great part of that. I want to specifically also cite your roses, which always seem to look so beautiful. Maybe you could give me some pointers on the roses inside my own home, how to get them looking that great. But not only is the hotel and everything around it so beautiful, but it has been managed so well. And I know that that surged for many years was an incredible as well. And I want to just thank you for your wisdom and your foresight. You're such a beautiful part of our community. This is for Harold and Harold. And today it says for your ongoing contributions to Atwater Village community. The success of the Los Feliz Hotel as a business tool offers the discerning traveler a place to stay, which truly reflects the charm, beauty, and hospitality that embodies Atwater Village. And then here for Eliza, for your ongoing contribution as well to Atwater Village community. And on behalf of the city council, I want to thank you and present you this certificate.
This is incredible. After all these incredible awards and presentations today, we're honored, we're humbled to be here today. Thank you. We are sincerely honored, and we love this award. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Are there any other presentations this morning? I see none. Would you have a quorum? Matt and Kirk, please call it over.
Berndsen, Galanter, Garcetti, Rol, Han, Holden, Labonte, Muzakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, with the Thomas wife sign. Padilla, twelve members present in the form, Mr. President.
Thank you very much for starting our business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Muzakowski moves in just a second.
Commendatory resolution for approval.
Mr. Pacheco moves in just a second.
Before we begin the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are several items to continue. Item number two, a request by council member Galanter to continue that item to Tuesday, April twenty-third.
Members request to continue item number two without objection.
Item number 18, a request by Councilmember Garcetti to continue that matter. Excuse me, to receive and file that.
Item number 18, request to receive and file. Let's open the roll on that. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Item 18 is received and filed, Miss Gru.
I just want to make sure Councilman Number One has continued until Tuesday. She had said one and two under Galanter, but I wanted to make sure we approve that one.
No, we had only continued item number two. There's a request to continue item number one now as well. Members' request to continue item number one. On item number one, is it the council?
I believe so. I'm reading, unless was there consent? Because the council file says the last day for council act is today.
Yes, the applicant requested an extension.
Okay, and we haven't taken that action. So members without objection will continue item number one with the consent of the applicant.
Mr. President, can I just ask that we can continue item 25, the request to CLA till Tuesday?
Request to continue item number 25, without objection.
And a couple for Eric Garcetti, who stepped out. He'd like to continue number 14 and ask that 10, 12, 15, 17, 20, and 22 be called special.
Okay, we're almost there. Item 14, request to continue without objection. So ordered. Next item.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have been held, items three through 12.
Items three through 12 before us.
I'm sorry, item 10 and 12 are two reports on the file. And item number 10 also has an amending motion.
And Mr. Garcetti wishes to call which items special?
Number 10 and number 12. And actually, on 14, the note was incorrect. He actually just wants to call it special, not have it continued. And then he asked 15, 17, 20, and 22.
Okay, we'll reconsider 14 momentarily. Miss Galanter.
I was going to call 10 and 12 special and 26.
Okay, we have items three through 12 before us. Items 10 and 12 called special. Public hearings have been held in committee. Members wishing, for members of the public to speak, would have to move for reopening the public hearing. Ms. Perry, did you have any specials to call? Items three through 12. Any other specials? Seeing none. Ms. Perry, did you wish to call special? Okay. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll and balance of the items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those items are approved.
And next items, Mr. President. Items 13 through 23 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Okay, on item 14, that matter having continued, Mr. Garcetti's office wishes that to be reconsidered and considered today. Let's open the roll and reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, that is reconsidered. We do have items 13 through 23, with the exception of item 18. We do not have requests for members of the public to be heard on these items. Such as even public hearings, open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials?
I understand there was a request from Councilmember Pacheco on item number 18, excuse me, under number 19, to continue that.
Mr. Pacheco.
It's the White Memorial Hospital?
No, we've had a question to answer, Mr. President.
Items 13 through 23, any specials? Miss Gru.
Garcetti, to make sure you have 15, 17, 20, and 22.
15.
17, 20, and 22.
17, 20, and 22. Madam State Attorney?
Yes, just a technical amendment on items 16C and F, just to request the Department of Recreation and Parks to reimburse the costs.
Technical amendment to item 16, we shall consider that as amended. Any other specials? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the remaining items, including item 16 as amended. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please.
On the continuation agenda, item number 24 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Item 24, I believe we have the request to continue item 24 to next Wednesday, April 24th. Mr. Holden.
It's Wednesday.
The note in front of me says Wednesday. What is your desire?
I may be off. I'm just going to be leaving for some time and take some time off like the other guys leaving office.
The city attorney on this item will be back by Tuesday if you wish to have it continued to Tuesday.
All right, what is your desire, Mr. Holden? Tuesday, the 23rd. Request to continue item 24 till Tuesday, without objection. Madam Clerk.
Next item, items for which public hearings have not been held, item 26.
26, call special by Ms. Galanter. Next item, please.
Going back to the items called special, item number 10, call special inasmuch as there is an amending motion and two reports on the file.
Item number 10 also called special by Ms. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number 10, colleagues, is an initiative that really places this city in a historic position as being the largest city in the world to adopt green building standards for making sure that we have sustainable construction of our buildings here in Los Angeles. This is an amazing opportunity. When Mikhail Gorbachev came here from Global Green, the mayor met with him and talked with him about this initiative. It was praised. It was still on the table at the time, but I think that we might be able to hear a little bit of something. The city architect Deborah Weintraub, if I can ask you to maybe step forward and just give folks a quick little overview of some of what we're doing. I also want to praise Councilmember Nick Pacheco for offering in budget committee that we looked, we instructed EWP to look at some of the public benefits money that we have. So wherever some folks do say that adding more sustainable construction, more green building techniques might cost a little bit more in the short term, that we can help reach that gap with public monies. Secondly, before we hear from Ms. Weintraub as well, green building works. Green building saves costs and improves the environment around us. Today, I don't know if many of you read the L.A. Times about the building at UC Santa Barbara, which has achieved the highest certification this country, is called Platinum. And everything is recycled in there. About 70% of all the materials used were recycled during the construction process. And its estate saves about 45,000 gallons of water a year. It's incredible. And that's really the goal for all of us to be able to get that. But Ms. Weintraub, if you would indulge all of us and just give us a very quick overview of what some of these programs is and what this initiative would do, that'd be great.
Thank you, Councilmember. To all of you, I'm very pleased to be here today. For me personally, this is a momentous day. The U.S. Green Building Council developed this green building rating system over the last 10 or years or so. It is a national standard for assessing the environmental impact of buildings in their designing and construction. Some of the benefits that the city will see are operating cost savings from energy reduction, improved indoor air quality by reducing the amount of materials that offer gas inside, reduced water use, improved daylighting in our spaces, and generally improved work environments for citizens in our city. I brought with me today something that I think should be a goal for the city of Los Angeles. So a report for a project that the city of San Diego did, called the Ridge Haven Building. It was a renovation of a building for their Environmental Affairs Department. It's been in operation now for four years. And after four years of operation, this building is operating at 60% below the standard, Title 24 energy standard that was set at the time it was built. This is a rather extraordinary reduction in energy. What we're talking about here in the city is targeting more like 15% energy reduction in the buildings that we're building. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And let me just praise again. These things do not happen in a vacuum. And Ms. Weintraub's work in this area really has led the way internally in the city. And she really deserves a great deal of our thanks. I also want to praise Councilmember Perry for her leadership on this and being a partner on this. And Councilmember Galanter has been encouraging businesses throughout Los Angeles for a long time to use sustainable construction. She adds solar paneling to their headquarters. Companies like Nutrigena, who have solar paneling. This makes sense, ladies and gentlemen, and it is something that we must do. By the year 2025, in the world, demand for water for instance will outstrip supply by 40%. We look at the power crisis last year, it was our conservation that helped us out of that as well. We have to continue to do this. We have to lead the way. And we have supported the Community College District as well. We sent a letter collectively urging them to do the same, and they have adopted these same standards. So Los Angeles today can make history. I urge your support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much. And thank you for Mr. Garcetti's recognition of my efforts. I too want to stand in support of this. This is an opportunity as we move forward in municipal construction to teach the rest of our city and our society the importance of sustainability so that we can set higher goals for the people who come behind us. I know that I'm making plans already to build a permanent center for the community in the Ninth Council District. And I plan on incorporating as much as I possibly can, including solar panels, recycling, and recycled furniture, the works to make this a showcase for the people of South Los Angeles. So thank you very much.
Mr. Pacheco.
Budget and finance, and we're reviewing this matter. We had originally were having this nice lengthy debate about the different levels of certification. But what I thought was most important, and what I wanted to augment, not only being certified, was that we actually put real resources and real dollars behind this. So I, in committee, made a recommendation and directed the CAO and CLA to work with the Department of Water and Power and their public benefit program. As you all know, that program generates $60 million a year. $30 million of it is used for low-income rate subsidies. $30 million, the remaining $30 million is used for programs that deal with efficiency, energy efficiency, basically green buildings and solar power. So I would like us as a council during this budget time and during the review of the budget, to seriously look at whether we can move $10 million of that money into a fund that will facilitate us finishing some of our Prop K budgets with making Prop K projects, of making those Prop K projects green buildings or green facilities. And that way, it's a win-win situation where we have public buildings that are actually energy efficient and are providing us some relief with our environmental issues. So as you go through and review the budget that we received this morning, I want you to keep an eye and an ear open to us moving in this direction to actually jumpstart some of our Prop K projects that have gaps. We would like them, I would like them to not only pay for the design and engineering, but also for all the components that would get us that certification of having a green building. And that way, we can get more and more of our city buildings online and send a strong message to the rest of the country that we support green buildings in our city. And obviously, we know all the benefits that have been pointed out by the environmental groups that in the long run, this will save resources for the city of Los Angeles. So from that standpoint, it's a smart business decision to spend a little money on that. So I actually support the motions. And I believe Councilmember Garcetti had an amended motion. And I ask that we support it, the reports as amended.
Ms. Galanter.
Thank you. Congratulations. I know when you first started, we weren't sure how soon we'd be able to reach this day. And I think this is pretty exciting. I also obviously want to support the adoption of the standards. And I want to suggest that we do, that we adopt the standards whether or not we have DWP's cash involved. Because I think that the, there are many things that DWP can do to assist without adding additional cash. They have the programs for the solar panels. They have energy audits. They can do that. There are a number of programs that I know you've been working with and developing these standards. And I certainly hope that future generations of city and DWP leadership will continue to work together on these things. But I think that the standards really should stand by themselves. This is a good thing for us to do, something I wish we had done years ago and so that we could have incorporated these standards into all the building that we have underway and that we did within the last, say, 20 years. But we're going to be doing a lot more building. And so I think it's very important that we adopt these as quickly as possible. And that we, if I understand the amendment correctly, and please somebody reassure me that I'm understanding it correctly. The amendment is simply to work with DWP to see if we can use, if there is any money to be used to help jumpstart some of these projects and incorporate. If that's correct, then I too want to join, and the amendment is fine. But I really do want to congratulate you. This is a, Alan, you haven't been city architect all that long.
Little over a year.
Little over a year. And here we are, finally doing something you've got this done. I also, if it's okay with you, would like to acknowledge Jeff Harland, who got so hooked on this when he was working in my office, that he refused to do anything except sustainable development standards. Would you like to stand up and wave if I see you lurking in the back? And Jeff has been a consultant to DWP, which has been working with Ms. Weintraub through all of this to try to bring these standards before us. So I think that we can be very proud of both our city and of our Department of Water and Power for getting here and urge the adoption. And let's get this show on the road.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. Any other questions to be heard? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Form please. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 12. That one has, that item has two reports on the file. And the Commerce and Energy and Natural Resources Committee report was submitted today.
Thank you, item number 12. Chair of the committee, Ms. Galanter.
Hello. Yes, there we are. Thank you. I'd like to move the Commerce Committee report. The difference between the two reports is that the IGR report was based on the first version of the bill in response to a number of concerns that were expressed to the bill's author, Assemblyman O'Connell. The bill was altered significantly and became, instead of a bill that many complained was punitive, became a bill offering incentives. Our Department of Airports, LAWA, and the Legislative Analysts still have some concerns, raised some additional issues in committee this morning on Mr. Padilla's motion. We approved a position that says oppose the bill unless or until these issues are addressed. And while I think, I personally think the spirit of the bill is highly commendable and that what they're trying to do is something that ought to be done. But I believe that it's legitimate to say that there are still some flaws in the solution they proposed. We want to work together. So I move the Commerce Committee's report.
Mr. Garcetti.
Colleagues, on this item, I would respectfully ask for consideration, perhaps that we support this bill. I think that it has changed the way that it is written so that it goes with more positive incentives now for areas that are adhering to our regional transportation plan. We have regional transportation plans. And as we know, no one governmental agency or level can solve our transportation problems. That's why it's so critical when we have regional transportation plans that we give them some teeth as well, that we give them some enforcement mechanism. Now, we shouldn't bear that unfairly, and that burden should come against us. But I do believe that we have the chance here for positive incentives to help make sure that we are in compliance with our very own regional transportation plan that we ourselves put forward and that we have been a part of, the SCAG. I think that is a critical thing for us to do. And that this has moved close enough to being a good bill that we can support it. There may not be the support for that today, but I would respectfully like to ask for us to, I guess, change the recommendation of the city and to be as supportive of the bill. If that is not successful today, nevertheless, I think it's important for us to state for the record that this is a move in the right direction. And that the more that we can stick to the spirit of what this does and to finding common regional transportation solutions adhering to the standards that we put out. And that is essentially our word. I think that people will be less cynical about the processes that move forward.
Chair of the committee, Mr. Holden.
I think the recommended opposition, that's right. So shall it be. I mean, the SCAG is trying to assume responsibility for L.A.'s transportation plan and stuff like that, Mr. Steve.
Well, I believe that the bill, and it's at least in original form, would have the Southern California Regional Airport Authority review.
What is the form that it's in, Mr. Steve?
I understand that it now is in kind of an incentive form. And in committee this morning, I think the consensus was to oppose much amended than we would. And based on the fact that we believe that if there is such a piece of legislation, it should be statewide. If there's going to be somebody that's going to review it, it should not be the Southern California Regional Airport Authority. And thirdly, I don't exactly know how the mechanics on the incentives work or don't work. But we... work, but we were willing to sit down and talk about those with the author and supporters if, in the meantime, the city's position was opposed on the basis of those criteria. I think that one of the fundamental difficulties of this bill is that the SCAG plan is a plan. It can be changed, and it's very difficult to make determinations on the, on something that can change every couple of years. And so, I don't particularly have a problem with trying to conform to some sort of overall plan if the rest of the region would do so as well.
You just need my time. I thought you were holding your time, Madam President. Go ahead.
I'm finished.
Took a minute and a half. I would say that in this region, if any county in Mershaw Airport, any county is not in compliance, then SCAG can investigate them all. I think that's what I saw very quickly. Doesn't make any sense. Let's send this where it belongs, to the wind, the twist. We should not even consider it, supporting it under any circumstances. I mean, most of the mandates come from federal government, and we attempt to be in compliance with those rules and regulations established by FAA and so on, and very often they're in conflict with what we do here, and we have a better opportunity not to go through SCAG, but to go directly to the federal government to get some consideration, going through our AINSA citizens, going through our congressional delegation. When you put another layer of government between us and the solution to the problem that's been created for our community, you've got a problem. Nothing will get done, everything just stops, still dead in its tracks. President members, let's send it where it belongs. Take a long walk and a short view. Thank you.
Chair recognizes, yes.
I withdraw my motion at this point. Since this is pending right now, I don't think it serves us to take a position either way, so I would substitute a motion for us not to take a position at this time, pending the outcome of this deliberation between us and the author of the bill. This is only for the timeline of a public hearing, of which there'll be many others. It's not going to be voted on yet, so I would substitute that in this place.
Is there a second to that motion? Second. That's the second of Ms. Galanter. So, the chair recognizes this one.
Thank you. And as a member of the committee that looked at this and deliberated on this, I'm still, and I know Ms. Galanter has a real effort to tell the state and to tell particularly Assemblyman Nacano that we want to work with him on getting a bill that works better, but I'm still in favor of opposing this, to send a strong message that we still have problems with this one, and that it gives more incentive, in my opinion, to the Assemblymen to work with us to come up with better amendments. And part of what I still am uncomfortable, and this is one of the sort of proposed amendments, is that instead of punishing regions who are not compliant, they now look to give incentives to sort of attract, but the incentives have to do with airport development. And so that if a particular jurisdiction wants to do any kind of work that actually would help develop airports, increase the air traffic in a particular region, then they would get help with the funding for that. That doesn't make sense to me, because, I mean, that's what we're trying to do right now, is to get other airports in our region to take their share of the burden of air traffic. And if they're not interested in it now, I think just giving them an incentive to help funding with the proposed project that would indeed increase their air traffic or work to develop their airport in another way, it seems like they're not interested in it. The incentive doesn't necessarily move them in that direction. I don't think this does what we want. I mean, we really want, you know, a real regional solution to air traffic, and I think everybody ought to be bearing the burden peacefully to what's coming into this region. I don't think this does it. I just think it's missing some major piece to really either provide incentive or punishment for those who do or don't. And I think we're complying, I think we're doing more than our fair share, and I don't think this bill really helps Los Angeles in any way to get to that point where we have a real regional solution. So, I'd like to oppose this, send a strong message.
The chair now recognizes Councilmember Garcetti. Yours was a point of order. All right, there are no other people who wish to speak. Madam Kirk, what's before us? There's a Garcetti substitute motion that the council take no position on this matter at this time, on this bill.
All right, we have before us a substitute motion to remain neutral at this point. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Six ayes, five noes.
That motion fails. So, now what is before us is the committee report recommending opposition with the caveat that if a bill is amended in certain manners, consider it support. For the chair of the committee. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Committee report is true.
And a president for quick introduction. Welcome. Fire Captain Greg Olson from Silver Lake Fire Station Fifty-Six. He's in here with his son named Toby. They're visiting City Hall. He's usually patrolling the great streets of Silver Lake and through the park. We want to just welcome you for your day off, coming in with your son Toby. Welcome to City Council chamber.
Madam President, on item number twelve, you wish to have the rules elections and IGR committee report received and filed.
That would be the order?
Next item is Ms. Galanter. Fourth with on the action. Item number fourteen calls special by Councilmember Bust Garcetti. Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. The controller has raised some issues about these contracts, which came through the committee, Economic Development Employment Committee. I think it might be prudent at the time that we hold this testimony committee for some of the questions that have been put out there, which I shared at the time to be answered. I don't know if we have staff available from the CRA to address those issues of the contract. Is there anybody here from the CRA right now? If not, I guess I would continue, ask to continue this until Tuesday.
There is a motion to continue item fourteen until Tuesday. Have staff present to discuss and answer some questions. There's no objection, that would be the order.
Next item, Madam President, item number fifteen calls special by Councilmember Garcetti. Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti. Fifteen?
Appreciate it. Inspired by Mr. Holden today, so we're calling all prime numbers special. Number fifteen here today, I just wanted to briefly say that this is to add the Don Carlos Apartments, five-two-two-six Hollywood Boulevard, to the list of historical cultural monuments. I just want to recognize Bill Johnson, who's the owner here today. He's right there. Really appreciate the work that you've done. It's a hundred percent occupied senior project. Retail has only one vacant front. This is a really great example of being able to take care of some of those historical treasures that we have in this city and actually give it to some sort of public benefit as well. So, I want to thank you, and I urge all of your support for this today. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. There is no one else who wishes to speak. Madam Kirk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That matter is approved.
Item number seventeen calls special by Councilmember Garcetti. Mr. Garcetti has noted to call that one special, so we can just open the roll on the committee report. Just be on the motion.
Close. As soon as we vote on it, let's open the roll. Open the roll, close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That matter is approved. It will be sent forward.
Next item, Madam President, item number twenty-two, calls special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Item twenty, this is actually Councilmember Padilla who started this, and while he's not with us today, this allows alternative fuel vehicles in the city of Los Angeles to park without having to pay the meters. This extends the period of time to do that until we can write that permanently into ordinance. For any of those folks who are parking enforcement officials who are watching this at home, please know that whenever you see alternative fuel vehicles, they are not to be ticketed when they're at city meters. I know there's been a lot of folks who've ridden my office and Councilmember Padilla, where that's still somewhat ongoing, but this is a great opportunity again to encourage people to be in environmentally responsible vehicles and to give some incentives for that, so I urge your support for this. Thank you.
All right. No other speakers, so open the roll on item twenty-two. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Twelve ayes. That matter is approved.
Next item, Madam President, actually forty was called special, and next item will be twenty-two was called special. Call special by Councilmember Garcetti.
There's a bike-to-work guy, he's going to publicize a bike-to-work.
This is item twenty-two, Mr. Laban.
Twenty-two is coming up here on May sixteenth. It's Bike-to-Work Day. We're going to encourage all Angelitos to safely ride their bicycles with helmets to work, I hope to be. Mr. Garcetti on Sunset and Echo Park Avenue that morning as we come down Sunset Boulevard together. Want to encourage all employees to do it. We have Michelle Mallory, our great bike advocate for the Department of Transportation. Give her a big hand there. We're all her workers, she's pushing for the bikeways of Los Angeles. Thank you, Madam President, and members of council, a safe Bike-to-Work Day on the sixtieth day of May two thousand and two.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. That matter is now before us.
And Janice is going to start that.
Open the roll. Mr. Garcetti, do you want to speak on that? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That matter is approved.
Point of order, Madam President. I'd like to reconsider item eighteen. I've been informed that how we can do something differently, though I'm getting a negative from the city attorney. Could we can hold that up there real quick? I'll confer.
We will hold that request on the desk. Next item.
Item number twenty-six calls special by Councilmember Galanter. Chair recognizes Ms. Galanter.
If everybody's ready to vote for it, I won't speak. There are no others, no other names. One person is now running. In that case, I won't speak. This is a motion to have us support pending legislation in Sacramento that would be the latest step in the state's efforts, which the city has always supported, to not have a nuclear waste dump at Ward Valley. One of the reasons I brought the motion in, the first reason, of course, is I don't believe we should have a nuclear waste dump there. The second reason is that I feel I should fasten, I am, along with former Councilmember Goldberg and some other people, a plaintiff in one of the lawsuits that is related to this, to the way this thing is proposed to be funded. And we thought we had settled the issue, but obviously we have not. Assemblyman Keely has introduced legislation that he believes, and I think is right, would assist in not having a nuclear waste dump at Ward Valley by essentially stripping the State Health Department of their ability to approve one. I urge our support. The city has previously supported the position that there should not be a nuclear waste dump there, but I believe that the motion at the time, this bill wasn't pending, the motions at the time were dealing with something different. We have been consistent in our opposition to the Ward Valley dump, and I think we should continue with that. So, I urge your support of this motion, which would support Assemblyman Keely's bill. Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I think it's very important legislation to support. Just this last week, a couple of days ago, I had a hearing in my committee, Environmental Quality and Waste Management Committee, and we learned from the EPA and Department of Energy where they are in conflict for the most part on what nuclear-free, radiation-free material, whatever the gradient they use, and to what extent it is free radiation. And if those two federal agencies can't get together, there is one shot, there's a possibility to deciding whether or not they're going to dump contaminated waste material at our dump sites or anywhere else that can contaminate our water, resources, et cetera. Then, of course, we ought to make sure that it's from the Department of Health, State Department of Health, their EPA, and they don't have any standard at all. So, this legislation is necessary, and we should be adopted post haste. The reason why, there was testimony from officials of the State Department of Health that they permit dumping of nuclear waste at our dump sites in the state of California. We can't have that anymore. That authority should be taken away from them, put into better control. I support this legislation. Long overdue should have been dumped.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. That concludes those who wish to speak. The matter is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
We will also send that one forthwith to the ears. Thank you.
Next item, Madam President, item, motion not on the agenda, it's a motion presented by Councilmember Misekowsky, and the city attorney will explain the details to you.
Thank you. This is regarding AP two-two-two-two by Coretts, and it has to do with requiring certain rifles and cartridges being registered and authorized by the Department of Justice, authorizing the Department of Justice to charge a registration fee. This bill was going to be brought before the council pursuant to Rule sixteen, but they were, the council district has just been notified that this is going to be in committee on, I believe, Monday. So, the council would need to make the findings that the need to act rose after the posting of the agenda, and that there's an immediate need to act.
Members wishing to speak on the high end. Seeing none, Madam Kirk, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Special one now before us, Ms. Misekowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Assemblymember Coretts has introduced a bill, which is, I think, an important one for us. It deals with a fifty-caliber BMG or Browning machine gun that is now not included in the automatic assault efforts to require them to be registered and require that they not be allowed to be owned by people who have previous criminal activities. This weapon is a four-foot-long rifle. It can shoot about two thousand yards. It can penetrate concrete. It's a weapon that there's concern now that it is not caught under all of the other gun control laws. It needs to be, the Coretts bill would do that. The hearing in committee is Tuesday, so I would like to ask that the council supports this unanimous vote, and that we send it to the mayor forthwith.
Thank you. Other members wishing to be recognized. Mr. Zine.
I have a technical question. Did you say fifty caliber?
That's what, that's what it's called, fifty caliber, yes. It's four-foot-long barrel, nine-pound weapon.
That's what they use in the wars.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members wishing to be recognized? Seeing none, Madam Kirk, please open the roll on special one. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with please. Next item.
Next item, Madam President, item number, excuse me, not on the agenda, special two, it's a motion by Councilmember Holden. It's a, and the city attorney will plan to take the findings.
Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a motion by Mr. Holden regarding Senate Bill one-four-four-four by Ms. Kuehl. It would establish various land use regulations and requirements for sites containing radioactive contamination. This bill is currently in committee. It came in committee, it went to committee last week. However, they have been notified that it's going to be in Sacramento in the committee on Monday, and therefore, this is a motion to Rule twenty-three, and also then a motion pursuant to Rule fifty-four to take it out of committee, and then the council would also vote on the resolution to endorse this. So, therefore, the council would need to make the findings and then take the other votes.
Mr. Holden on the findings.
My movement of findings. In fact, the matters have already explained that this bill is of an urgency nature, is going to be heard in the committee on Monday, and we have to take our, make our position known.
Other members wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none, Madam Kirk, please open the roll on the findings. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Special two now before us, Mr. Holden on the motion.
President, members, this is a motion, resolution by Holden Garcetti, which supports the Kuehl bill as related to contaminating and handling a waste, contaminated material.
Other members wishing to be recognized? Seeing none. Madam Kirk, please open the roll on special two. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Special two is approved. Fourth with please.
Was that the vote on Rule fifty-four to take it out of committee?
I believe it's on the entire matter.
Okay, so you're going to put those together.
Okay, so you're going to put those together.
And including the resolution. Fourth with, please. Next item.
Mr. President, do you wish to recess this meeting to go into the special meeting?
Yes, we do have a special meeting, colleagues, that has temporarily recessed the regular meeting. Madam Clerk, please call roll on special meeting.
Burnt Sandalantara Garcetti, Grue, Han, Holden, Laban, Sikowski, Pacheco, Perry, Rez, Ridley Thomas, Weiss, and Padilla, twelve members present before, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We do have one item agenda. Item number one on the special meeting. Now, I request members of the public to be heard on special meeting agenda, item number one, which will deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to be recognized on item number one? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please. That concludes the special meeting agenda. Let us now adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting. Madam Clerk, next item.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Time for members of the public to address the council on items within our jurisdiction but not on our agenda. Council calls forward Gene Crisher.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. I'd like to preface my comments with my congratulations for your vision on having passed the sustainable building design within the city of Los Angeles. I have been working with the Collaborative for High Performance Schools, and we have sought and received a similar reservation by the Citizen Oversight Committee and by the Board of Education within the Los Angeles Unified School District, and I'm very heartened that the city is moving in this direction. Similarly, I would hope that the council would have similar vision with regard to your enunciation of support for school construction bonds in your 2001, 2002 legislative agenda. I attended a meeting recently of the Education and Neighborhoods Committee, and although joint use, which I support, and have been working with the Citizen Oversight Committee on, I heard no enunciation of support for accountability and/or oversight with regard to these vast funds. I am here to express that I don't believe that anyone at City Council or any citizen would like to see a future bond measure that would suffer the way that Proposition BB suffered, the monies. So I urge each and every council member to either attend or send a representative to a meeting to be held here at City Hall on the 25th, that's next Thursday at 10:30 a.m., and to take advantage of information that has been submitted to the Education and Neighborhoods Committee and held by Lorraine Braithwaite, and I thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting in referral.
Those motions shall be posted and referred.
There is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Zine requests to be excused. Personal business Friday, May 10th. That meets council policy.
Mr. Zine is excused.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay, are there any announcements? May 17th is the Friday, I believe. He'll be recovering from a bike-to-work. Mr. Laban is excused. Are there any announcements? Announcements? Seeing none, are there adjourning motions? Mr. Laban for an announcement.
Tomorrow, there's Earth at Sunday, Saturday, Sunday, Cindy in your district there. You want to tell everybody, buddy? At Lake Balboa, there's a great Earth Day event, and I know I'm going to go out there and visit Cindy. I know it's in your district, but it all connects, and just a little north of the great Los Angeles River there, the Sepulveda Basin. So I know a lot of people put a lot of effort into that, and anyone out there who want to see a great Earth Day event this weekend, go to Lake Balboa in the 11th district. Lake Balboa, right next to the community of Lake Balboa. There's also a great event tomorrow morning in the 7th council district, a pet fair taking place at Ritchie Valens Park and Recreation Center. Everybody throughout the valley, throughout the city, certainly invited to that. Any other announcements? Adjourning motions, Ms. Grue?
Standing up before you today, asking the council to adjourn in memory of Ray Cunningham. I know that many of you may have known Ray in her years of working for Tom Bradley and for city service. She started to work in LAPD with Mayor Bradley in the early '50s. She had worked on every one of his campaigns, had worked in the community. She was Mrs. South Central. She was everywhere, really a person who committed her life to public service. And we... She was quite a community activist. She is survived by Rochelle Sims, her daughter Dana Pearson, also her daughter Kina Cunningham, and her son David Cunningham, and has three grandchildren, Evan, Ashley, and Shelley Nicole. She'll be sorely missed and someone who dedicated her life to our city. I know that Councilman Holden and Councilman Perry and Councilman Ridley Thomas worked with her as well over the years.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holden. I just want to say that Ray Cunningham has already been mentioned as a lifetime public employee for the city of Los Angeles. He started his career in the police department and then ended it in the mayor's office. Prior to, I mean, you're right, campaigns are tough. The campaign of '79 where Ray Cunningham was like the office manager, believed in the job, worked tirelessly in order to elect the mayor, who was first rung, the mayor, City Councilman Tom Bradley. And thereafter, we wanted to rest his history, came here to work and served the city in his office and left when he did, retired. Put a lot of good time and trust in the community. Her husband also was a public servant. He was a police officer, and studied law, I guess, never going to law school, just with a lawyer. And he was past the bar and became a standing juror, judge for the county of Los Angeles. So that family has given us all they had, and that's the entire life of our service. And their husband preceded her in death, and they would both be remembered, as president members of the council, to the family of Ray Cunningham.
I believe that should be all members. Any others? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.